First of all, we have the approval of the minutes of January 21st. This is our organizational meeting. Do we hear a motion to approve those meetings, those minutes?
No.
Do we hear a second?
I'll second.
R.G. Craig seconded. Gary Hoffman made the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now for the regular minutes. Do we hear a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Helen Meckus, do we hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Any public comments regarding, relating to the agenda? Okay, any new business? Okay, thank you. First of all, at the request of the Planning Commission, I'd like to entertain a motion that Hanover Engineering review the environmental impact statement of Nestle's application. Do we hear a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
It's made by Carrie Crum. Do we hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Helen Meckus. Is there any discussion on that? Call, call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. I'd like to introduce Jason Smith with Hanover Engineering. Jason's at the end of our table. He will be making some notes tonight and certainly have any questions as they become necessary. And welcome, Jason. Before we start, let me explain that Nestle's will be here offering information on the various sections of their application. There will be some time allotted after each presentation to ask questions specific to that portion of the presentation. Keep in mind that this presentation is for the benefit of Eldred Township residents, the Board of Supervisors, and the Planning Commissions. And it will help us as planners to better understand the proposed project. I'd like to say that we certainly appreciate Nestle's being here. They've already made this presentation once. And unfortunately, there was not a large group to hear the benefits of their project. And so they have agreed graciously to offer that again. We like to maintain, and as a Planning Commission, we're going to insist that we maintain a certain level of civility and that we keep your questions in regards to, keep your questions in regards to the information presented. There will be time after the entire presentation to ask any additional questions you might have. I'd like to introduce Attorney Tim Weston with K. and L. Gates. He's Nestle's attorney on this project. He will be introducing the various presenters and giving them a background, a short, brief background on what they're going to present. So at this point, I'll turn the meeting over to Attorney Weston and appreciate it.
One more thing. What was the name, Nestle lawyer's name? I didn't get it.
Attorney Timothy Weston.
Thank you. You did it well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I am Tim Weston. I am counsel for Nestle Waters North America. I'd like to briefly explain how we would like to proceed in terms of providing the presentation this evening. I, here with me tonight is Eric Andres. And I'm going to ask each person to sort of stand up in order so you see them. Eric Andres, who's the Natural Resource Manager for Nestle Waters North America. Ed Davis, professional engineer, who's the project engineer. Lou Vittorio from Earth Res Group, who's the hydrogeologist. Earl Armitage from Pinone, the traffic engineer. And Rob O'Neill of Epsilon Associates, who did the noise study. To try to keep this organized, what we're going to do is, in order, go through the general review of the application, what's its contents. And that will be done by Ed Davis. And then we will have the hydrogeologist talk about the water withdrawal aspects in the study that was done. So the issues that are related to that, Lou Vittorio will handle. And then Earl Armitage will talk about the traffic studies that were done. And finally, Rob O'Neill will talk about the noise studies. To lay background, the proposal is to undertake a water extraction use on property which is owned by Gower Estates in the commercial zone as designated by the Eldred Township zoning ordinance. The contents of the application, this is probably one of the longest applications, I think, that the township has received, is in three volumes plus a set of maps. The volumes include the application forms, a narrative, a set of affidavits, proof of ownership, site plans, which are oversized plans, erosion and sedimentation control plan, a stormwater management plan, a environmental impact statement, a sound level impact assessment, a traffic study, a hydrogeologic study, and additional supporting information. One of the questions that was asked at the last Planning Commission meeting, which some of the people here attended, but certainly all of the planners attended, was what was the maximum use of the facility? And we want to answer that question very clearly. The proposal for the water withdrawal is an average of 200,000 gallons per day in any 30-day period. But as part of the regulatory requirements of the Department of Environmental Protection, they will set a maximum withdrawal limit equal to that which was tested, which was 170 gallons per minute, which is 245,000 gallons per day. So over a month, the average can be no more than 200,000 gallons per day. And at any one minute, cannot be more than 170 gallons per minute. Those are the two constraints. And our traffic engineer will talk about what that means in terms of the studies that he conducted. They were within the boundaries of what he conducted. But we wanted to make that very clear because we know some questions had been raised as to, was there ever a maximum? And yes, absolutely, there is a maximum. It goes with the territory of regulating water withdrawals. What I'd like to do is ask Ed Davis to start out by explaining the overall application and the layout of facilities, activities, development that would occur at the project site. And so, Ed, if I could turn to you.
Thank you, Tim. I think I might set this up here so that I can use a pointer to some of these exhibits. It might help. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah. They can't hear you, but still.
Is there a way to turn the volume up?
Just call it.
Or, I can try to talk louder. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. Just say something if my voice starts lowering. This project is situated on basically 82 acres of property owned by Gower Estates LLC. The property is located along the, just south of Cuckoletown Road and along the east side of Chestnut Ridge Drive. This is just a cover sheet of the plans, but Cuckoletown Road is at the upper part of the site and Chestnut Ridge Drive is along the left side of that plan. The work that Nestle will be doing on the site is predominantly at the northwest corner where the existing trucking garage is situated now. There'll be two production boreholes that's situated more in the middle of the site. You can see where I'm pointing here on the, on the map in this area. And those two production boreholes will, the water will be piped down to the truck-loading facility down in the northwest corner where the trucking facility is now situated. This is an aerial view of the property. The yellow lines depict the zoning. All the work that we'll be doing on the site is situated in the commercial zoning district. There are some portions on the southern side of the property that's in the AR district or the agricultural residential district. But all the work that will occur with the production boreholes and the load facility will be in the commercial zoning district. This is an overall picture or boundary plan of the property. Again, most of the work is going to be situated here in the northwest corner of the property. These little blue circles in this area where I'm pointing are existing wetlands on the property. Buckwaw Creek is running pretty much along the northern end of the property through here. I think everybody knows where Buckwaw Creek is. Let me move over to a site plan so I can show you the features of it or all the facilities. This map shows Chestnut Ridge Drive right over here along the left side of the plan. There's an existing driveway that's used now by the trucking facility, and that will be the driveway that's used for the new spring water loading facility. So we will enter that existing drive, the same, the same location where the trucks do The existing block building, the garage, is located in a large stone area in this whole vicinity that you see. We'll be constructing a new loop driveway that will go behind the garage, circle around to the north toward Buckwaw, and then turn again so that the tanker trucks are heading toward Chestnut Ridge Drive on their way out. In the middle of that property, there'll be a new small load building. It's about 600 square feet. And there'll be two stainless steel silos, one at either side of the building. I can show you a quick elevation. Let me go over to the, that's basically what the building will look like. It'll be a masonry block building with stone face spacing and a slate-style roof. And the two silos are next to it. This is a rendering, a, it's a very accurate rendering. New load building is situated right here. You can see the two stainless steel silos next to it. Mr. Gower's trucking garage is situated in the back there. Chestnut Ridge Drive is off this map, but it's to the right. So the trucks will be entering to the east, circling around the building. We have to put a new retaining wall in there for grading purposes to, for the maneuvering. And you see it circles around, comes back around, heads again toward Chestnut Ridge Drive. The trucks stop right in front of the building. Trucks get turned off. They won't, they, they won't sit there and idle. The truck driver, basically, he'll go inside the building. After he hooks, he'll go inside the building, there's a control panel in there. They hook a hose up to the truck. The control panel tells some pumps to turn on. Truck fills automatically, set them out, pumps turn off. All the pumping equipment is inside the building. So once the truck's loading, the driver unhooks the hose to the truck, starts the truck, and he heads back out toward Chestnut Ridge Drive, and then heads toward the bottling plant in the Allentown area. The loop driveway is situated like that so that the trucks can get, make the full turn safely. They can be straightened out when they get in front of the building there. The site plan and the ordinances, you know, we developed a site plan with, of course, with the ordinances in mind. There's setback requirements from the property line. There are buffer requirements from creeks, wetlands, water bodies. And, you know, all those buffers have been adhered to. You know, Buckwaw Creek's along here. There's a 75-foot buffer from, from Buckwaw Creek. There's a, you know, there's a 50-foot inner buffer, 25-foot outer buffer. There's also 75-foot buffers from the wetlands. You know, those are adhered to as well. So strikes, the site's restricted by Buckwaw Creek and the wetlands. So our working area is between Buckwaw Creek, the wetlands, and Chestnut Ridge Road. But all the setbacks have been adhered to for, all the building setbacks. Lock coverage as well. There's, I think there's a 60% of lock coverage allowed. We're bound to less than 5% of lock coverage. All the setbacks were well and above what the setback requirements are. There's also other buffers, you know, landscape buffers. We've, we comply with those buffers as well. We've added some, we have a landscape plan here. We've added evergreen landscaping along the driveway, between the driveway and Buckwaw Creek, which will help for glare and visibility during the times of year when there's defolages and on the trees. There's also another buffer we placed on the south side of the property.
Water, right?
On the south side of the property, where there's some homes up top. That'll screen the facility as well with that. And, you know, there's a lot of natural buffers on the property as well with existing trees and, and ground cover there. This is a lighting plan as well. We've, we have 20-foot-tall light standards around the property. We've made sure that there will not be any spillover of light onto adjacent properties. So all the lighting will be contained on-site. Just going to need a couple more minutes. There's, we've developed a stormwater management plan and an erosion and sediment control plan for the project. So there is a stormwater collection system, collecting all the runoff from some offsite as well as all the new paved driveways and the gravel areas. The stormwater will be, will be conveyed to a new stormwater detention system. You can see this in, basically in orange color. It's an underground system that will hold back the water to ensure there's no rate of runoff increase. And there's also infiltration that's occurring on here to make sure the volume's controlled as well. And it ultimately will flow out into Buckwaw Creek where the water goes now. But there will not be any, any increase in the rate of runoff from the property. There's a lot of water quality measures on this as well. We have oil-water separators. There's other devices that they call stouts. There's, like I said, it's being infiltrated as well, a lot of the stormwater. So this will comply with the NPDS requirements. Everything has to be approved through Conservation District and DEP. There's a floodplain on the property as well. You can follow this dark line that runs through the property according to the FEMA mats for Monroe County. We are not putting any fill in the floodplain, so, you know, we've ensured that there will not be any effect on the existing floodplain. We took it a little bit further. We studied the, there's a detailed study that FEMA did on this site for Buckwaw Creek. We looked at those flood elevations with the profiles, and we've, you know, we've also determined that the 100-year floodplain is actually a little bit different than what's shown on those maps. It's closer to Buckwaw Creek in most of the area. But regardless, we're not putting any fill in the floodplain, so there will not be any increase in elevation. That's a requirement by the Township's floodplain ordinance. Yeah, I hope that gives you a pretty good overview of the site development of the project. I'll put the rendering back up. It shows a good view of what this will look like after it's constructed.
I'm glad I limbered up this morning. Do you want us to go through all of the presentations and then do questions as we did at the last meeting?
I think while they're fresh, I prefer.
Okay.
Here, I'll have that.
At this point, we'll take questions, but specifically for Mr. Davis, not pertaining to the whole project itself, but specifically for the most recent presentation. And we'll do that through every section of it.
And that mic there, you just need to turn it on. And if you would, give this your name. And.
Good evening. Don Tenara. I don't live in a township anymore, but I own land in a township. Since I own land on the top of Blue Mountain, heading up in Smith Gap Woodlands, I have some concerns about my water level dropping down. So my first question is, how many gallons are you going to carry in the trucks? What is the capacity?
There'll be time for that, but at this point, it's strictly questions in regards to the most recent presentation because what we want to do-
That is in the most recent presentation. I'm concerned about the weight of the truck coming down Chestnut Bridge in the ice and the snow and the bridge it's going over, which has a state capacity limit.
And there's another presenter will just, just specifically traffic and loading concerns, correct?
Yes.
That will be, that will be addressed. And, and I'm not trying to, you know, I, I just want to get through the presentations as a whole, and we'll take questions specifically for that. And this is pretty much the civil aspects of the project and, and, and as far as traffic, weights-
Why don't you just address it now, then?
Because we want to get through those presentations.
Okay, but this is a safety concern. If a truck can't stop at that stop sign and anybody's coming in either direction, east or west, and the building that's at the end of that stop sign-
At the end of the traffic report, we'll take your question first.
All right. I'll be back.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, Don Warren. I don't know if this gentleman knows, do you know how many gallons each of the silos holds? Or is that for somebody else?
I can answer that one. It's, it'll be approximately 30,000 gallons per silo.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one question. With regards to the pumping operation, what's going to actually power it? Is it going to be electric for the extraction and for the facility? Or is there going to be some generation, generators in some manner?
The, all the, all the pumps, there'll be pumps at the boreholes and pumps inside the building now will all be fired by electricity. There will be an emergency generator on-site. There'll probably be propane fired, but the, it'll be fully powered with electricity. If there's three-phase power there, we'll bring in three-phase. If there's not, we'll deal with the single-phase.
Okay. Propane-powered, I'm assuming that propane tanks and everything else is under restoration in what you submitted?
Yes, the site plans show where the propane tank would be, and that's for the emergency
Could you please give me the height on the silos?
In the application, they, we've indicated that they will be 40 feet.
You have any idea what Eldred's ordinance requires?
It allows 50 feet.
Have the wetlands been totally delineated by the Army Corps of Engineers at this point in time?
There's another environmental person here that can answer questions about the wetlands.
Will that be a law judge?
The, yeah. And the wetlands have been delineated. I don't believe that they've had the Army Corps come in and do a separate jurisdiction, jurisdictional determination, but I'm not 100% sure on that.
I think an Army Corps jurisdiction will be required, though, will it not?
We are not impacting the wetlands. There's a slight temporary impact on a wetland for a water line, just for a water line construction, but all the wetlands are not being impacted. We've complied with all the buffer requirements in the township.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Question on the height. You're probably right. It would, you are probably right. It could be 40 feet. I thought I saw it was 45 in the, in the book, but I may be wrong. But question, do they have to be that high? Because they sure don't fit into the character of the surrounding area.
They, you know, water, water silos are, they can vary in height, they can vary in diameter. Typically, silos like this are around a 12-foot diameter for shipping purposes. The 40-foot height is, you know, a height that will give us 30,000 gallons for the operation. You know, they are stainless steel. They'll, they'll always look like that. They don't rust. They, you know, what you see there, a stainless steel silo is one that'll look like years from now.
You would think you were living in an industrial area, though, when you sit on your front porch and look at that. I mean, that's, that's not conducive to the area. Plus, what protection do you have for people who have buildings right around there if one of them fails?
The amount of water that comes out of those silos is 30,000 gallons. That will easily be dissipated on-site. It won't, will not cause any trouble to buildings off-site.
I don't believe that. I have buildings very close to that. I'll call you, leave your number so I can call you when I can remind you I have water in the buildings.
Kenneth Filbert. I've lived here for almost 40 years. And every time a new home was built and they had to drill a well, I saw some things happen in my own drinking water. Now, you're putting silos in this facility. What about the rest of us? Should we have silos too in case we need water? Because that's what you're taking away from us. You told, you talked about the wetlands, the way you're going to pump water. There aren't going to be wetlands here very long. And you're saying something about the excess going into the Buckwaw Creek? I see at times during the summer, the Buckwaw Creek is just a trickle. There won't be no Buckwaw Creek if you're taking 200,000 gallons a day out and all of us depend upon, on our drinking water. I mean, you're taking water away from us. Three times, three times I heard the work benefits. Where are our benefits? We heard that three times when this meeting was called to work. Where are our benefits? We've paid taxes here for all our lives. What do we have? We're going to have worthless land. And if we have to drill another well, we're going to hit sulfur. Do you want to drink, Walt? Now, why don't all, all of yous over there sitting, why don't you move into our township? Okay?
Get an attitude.
Yeah, move, move here and then go along with your plan. Or better yet, you swap your homes with people here. Yeah. Then we'll see how this comes to work.
You know, this in your town.
Yeah. Find somewhere, go, go out to Nevada where there, where you can dig all you want to try and find- and find water.
We certainly can appreciate the passion. We've, we've seen passion at numerous meetings.
All right. Where's our silos? He's going to put silos here. Where's our silos? Are we going to get silos?
What we've asked them to do tonight, and, and, and first of all, they, they, in this case, they've made this presentation before. The planning commission asked them to give it again. And as I said, I'm encouraging civility. I understand...
I've been very civil.
I understand that. But what I'd like to do is, because there's several presentations to be made here tonight...
Oh, I think we can end it right here. It's done, as far as I'm concerned.
What about our presentation?
Yeah. You're speaking for ourselves.
You're absolutely right. And there's, and any, and any, as we mentioned, that most of the meetings, there is a, a method through the zoning hearing board that any individuals withstanding, those individuals that they feel have been harmed, have that audience in front of the zoning hearing board, and they can make application to speak in front of the hearing, the zoning hearing board, of which their first meeting is going to be next...
Wednesday.
Wednesday. And I believe a similar presentation to this will be performed next Wednesday as well, at which point, I doubt at that point, there'll be much time for comments or questions except from the zoning hearing board. But Attorney Martinez will have some type of form of which residents can fill out, state briefly their standing in regards to what's going on.
You're not answering my question.
Yes, go ahead.
Where's our silos? That's what I want to know. He's going to build silos here to take water out. What are we going to do when we're out of water?
I don't want to answer...
Now, he's going to move. We aren't.
I don't want to answer their questions, but the silos are there for the main reason that they have to fill tanker trucks up. And the well won't produce a, an ankle, an enough volume at that rate in order to load a truck. And I don't want to speak for you, but that's, that's the purpose of a silo, to present a reservoir. That's why your local fuel oil company has a big tank, because if they had to depend on a, a, a pump to load each and every truck, they wouldn't be able to do that. So you have a large tank to act as a reservoir. So in this case, their tanks are acting as a reservoir. It sounds like I'm defending them.
Yes. Definitely does.
Hey, you're going to want to mention benefits three times. I wrote it down in my little black book. Three times you mentioned the word benefits. I don't see any benefits.
There'll, there'll, there'll be, there'll be a time for those type of questions to be asked towards the end.
Okay. Well, let's hope the next guy up to the microphone there mentions some benefits for us.
And I was just asked, did you repeat? Do you have his name? Yep, we have. I'll say. Thank you. The, the last set of questions went to, I think, probably one of the more fundamental concerns that most of the people have expressed in prior meetings, which is, what happens to the water in this community? How does this water withdrawal affect folks in the community? And for that, for the presentation on the hydrogeologic studies and the evaluations on those questions, I'd like to call on the professional geologist who did the studies, Lou Vittorio.
I have a question for Mr. Davis. I don't know what anyone else has got to answer.
Yeah, just, just a couple of questions. The, the first one is, the, the lot is going to now host multiple uses, which is allowing them to the zoning ordinance, but you have to basically treat each use as if it complies with the zoning ordinance, as if it was a separate lot. I have, for the first time, seen the, the plant, the big plants tonight. I did not see, and I haven't gone through them all, I did not see in the application where there was an analysis done to show, to demonstrate that each of the uses complies with the, with the zoning wards. In particular, I noticed that the, the truck shed, and I presume that operation is going to stay where it is, and it looks like it's very close to the tanker loading building. Have you worked that out, whether that they both comply with the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, that, that comment came on a recent letter we got from Hanover Engineering. The uses and setbacks and whatnot, that came from Brian Cucker. I did look at it. We will be responding in writing to that question. To give it in a nutshell, yes, we do comply. The, if you look at the setback requirements between structures, we do comply with that. Probably the, the one that's closest is the, the silo height of 40 feet. The next structure has to be at least 40 feet away from the highest structure, and we do comply with that as well. As far as lot sizes and building coverages, we do comply with, with the multiple uses on the property. So we will address it in a written response, though.
When do you think you'll do a response? I want to know what we have, you know, in terms of our decision-making process. Russ, will you be there?
If I remember correctly, there were about five pages of comments from Hanover Engineers. And on this particular issue, it's going to be addressed in the first day of the zoning hearing board hearing next week. That analysis. Some of the other questions require some other information, but we'll address it at that time.
Are you going to do a response letter to Hanover's letter?
Yes. We'll do a response letter and it will come back to the township. I assume it will be shared with the planning commission and certainly will be shared with the zoning hearing board.
Is, is there going to be any type of legal document between the users on the property as to any common maintenance items? Will, will there be any common maintenance items between the users on the property?
What the, I, I, let me explain what the relationship is. Gower Estates LLC owns the property. Under the option agreement that Nestle Waters has entered into, it would get a long-term lease for the portion of the property where the two boreholes are located and the truck loading station. It also provides for restrictions on other development of the property in order to protect the watershed. Mr. Mr. Gower in Gower Estates retains the rights on the other parts of the property. All of the driveways are, it, it's recognized that they have the right to use the driveways as they are now. It's all going to be under the same Gower Estates ownership as it is now.
Do you plan to subdivide the property or file a subdivision?
We, we do not plan at this point to file a subdivision. The, the house is actually occupied by Mr. Gower's son.
There was a reference made at the last planning commission meeting, special meeting, about whether or not you have access rights on a public road. Is that something that you've looked at at all or not?
The, the driveway into the property directly accesses currently an unnamed township road which goes to Chestnut Ridge Drive. That's a, that's an existing direct connection that goes across nobody else's property.
There's two properties, I think, that you're going to somehow have some kind of control rights over for watershed protection. Are those properties, are they part of the proposal right now? Are they being handled independently in terms of your, how you're going to control them?
The, the prop, all of the properties in question are Gower Estates' properties. They're all part of the same lease. They, there is no development occurring on those other Gower Estates' properties, so they are not included in, in our count of, of area, but we are controlling them for purposes of controlling the watershed and not having adverse development to the quality of the watershed.
Tim, in, in terms of development, is this property, once it's approved, going to have a significant tax assessment value? Is it going to bring in real estate taxes at all? Or is it going to be marginal in terms of it about?
Mr. Gall, I cannot tell you how tax assessment works. That is not one of my fields. And there, there certainly will be more value in this property than there is currently, but in the, I, I can't make the, the estimate of what it is. That's not my field.
I understand. What about job creation? Will there be any jobs that will be located on the site of the, you know, of the development because of the new infrastructure?
The, the answer to that is no. There are no jobs at that location. It is not designed to be a manned location except for those who come to, from time to time to maintain it. But it's not a, it's not a factory, it's not a plant, it's not even a store.
It's a sin. It's a sin. You're not creating jobs in this town that you're, you're coming in and destroying. It's a sin. Sorry.
Excuse me. More interruptions we have, the longer it is it's going to take. So that's okay. You can all...
They can hear you in the back.
Okay. Tim, just in terms of the, that's okay. In, in, in terms of the people who are going to be on the site during the operation, will everyone who's being, who will be there, will there be Nestle employees or will there be other subcontractors or other people who will be at the site when it's operating?
Well, Mr. Andrews can join me on this, but my understanding is currently Nestle has only three trucking companies that it contracts with. It has a very restricted group of contractors that are allowed to carry its water. And so it would be Nestle employees and any truckers who've passed the tests to, to work on Nestle projects and are on, with those contractors. That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
So I believe now I call on Mr. Vittorio.
Thank you, members of the planning commission and residents of Eldred Township. My name is Louis Vittorio. I'm a principal hydrogeologist at EarthRes Group. I'm a professor, excuse me, professional geologist licensed in Pennsylvania, and our firm was tasked with evaluating the hydrogeology of the site and determining the sustainability of, of the withdrawal for the site. Our team of geologists and hydrogeologists were at the site. You may have seen us out there. The, Ed had briefly described the site. I think before we get into it, what I would like to go into, since our main goal is determining the sustainability of the site, is to talk about some of the basic concepts that, that we look at in determining sustainability of a site. One of the first concepts that I wanted to go over with, with you is the water cycle that, that we deal with through the whole process. And basically, there, there's several components of the water cycle. Most of the, the water that gets into the basin is via precipitation. And how that occurs is through evaporation from the oceans and lakes. It goes into the clouds, forms clouds, and then rains down as precipitation, as rain The, the precipitation over the land then will come down off, off the land as either runoff or will go into the ground as groundwater flow and make its way down gradient, down slope and discharge and seep springs or discharge to streams. Those streams in turn will discharge to rivers, and again, the rivers will discharge to, to the oceans. And, and then the cycle repeats. So in, in the purpose of this is to actually drill down further into what we have in the sub-basin, the general water cycle. And that is, here's a depiction of, say, a water basin, and it's, it's a graphic depiction right out of a textbook, but if you look at the site, you could, you could say that this would be the Buckwa Creek, and this would be the hill going up the site to the east on the Gower property and perhaps the unnamed tributary. And I can explain some of the concepts that we have on, on the hydrologic cycle. Rainfall occurring on the mountain will then go into, onto the ground and go as runoff down the slopes and also seep into the aquifer. And it's depicted on this cross-section here, it shows the aquifer at the, at, in this, in this block model. And in the aquifer, the water moves down slope just like the, the surface water does. And part of that informs that when it doesn't rain, the, the streams still flow, and the flow out of the streams into the model or out of the model is, what's determined, what we look at is base flow. So what is the base flow of a stream? So the stream ultimately gets its flow from the recharge from the rainfall, and the base flow is an estimate of how much that recharge is. So in, in the absence of precipitation, the streams still flow, and that's a, the flowing streams is a indication of how much water is coming out of the aquifer at that time. So we look at the base flow components in the hydrocycle and look at stream gauge data to determine factors of recharge and to look at what is going into the aquifer, what is coming out of the aquifer. And again, that is a cycle that is, is driven by precipitation. And in Eldred Township, we have approximately 50 inches a year of precipitation, and that is what drives it. So when we're looking at what we're permitting, we are permitting portions of the available base flow that's driven by precipitation, and we consider it in drought times. So that is what I want to get into in our, in our discussion. So, and, and really, as, as we go through this process to the permitting agencies with the Delaware Basin Commission, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, they will look at this water cycle, they will look at the base flow and consider what volumes can be taken during drought times. So they, they look at the site already and, and consider volumes during drought. So without, a little bit further ado, I want to go into then the studies that we, we conducted geologically and hydrogeologically at the site to determine that sustainability based upon the precipitation cycle and the water cycle and, and determine ultimately, again, what the sustainability of the withdrawal was. The figure, this is figure four from the report, and it may be difficult to see back there, but basically, the, the site is, here, here's the Buckwa Creek. The fire hall, I believe, is right here. We're right here tonight. The site is roughly oriented east-west, and it goes uphill. The topography goes from the unnamed tributary, which is north-south, it flows to the north of Buckwa Creek and heads, and then the topography heads to higher elevation to the east up towards the crest of Chestnut Hill. The geology of the site is, is what we call a series of folded sandstones and siltstones, limestones that are of Devonian age. And I have just a, a quick demonstration of what would that be at the site, looking at that. So we have a sheet of paper with the rocks that were laid down initially horizontally. And, and looking eastward at the site, the, the rocks are folded into a series of folds up gradient of, of the, of the unnamed tributary in the area where the, where the boreholes are. So in, in the, in the southern portion of the site, where they say, the northern portion of the site, the rocks are folded like this, which is called an anticline. So when you look at this, you have layers of rocks, and in this case, we have some blue sheets in here that, that would represent what the aquifer layer was. And then as you go to the southern part of the site, they, they actually are folded into what we call a syncline. And, and how, how that affects the investigations that we did, the rocks are also oriented. So we may, here we talk about strike and dip of the geology out there. The strike is, if this is, if this is a plain of rocks that you might see on the side of the road, the strike of the rock is in this direction, and the dip of the rock is, is, is towards me. So it's an angle. So at the site, we have, we have a series of folds of rocks that trend to the east, and they also dip and plunge to the west. So if you look up there where the aquifer is, we have a series of folds where rainfall happens on the mountain, falls onto the folded rocks, flows down, down the mountain towards the unnamed tributary and discharges as springs and also along the stream and in the stream, excuse me, unnamed tributary. So that is kind of just a picturesque way to, to explain the geology. Again, it's folded, and if you look at the lines on the map, you can tell which, which units they are. The other, the other main feature with the, with the units that we show is that the main site area is underlying in the aquifer that we're, yes?
What do you mean by units?
You, I mean, geologic units, ma'am. Thank you. It's a great question. So... So, in the geology, the differing units may be a sandstone is a unit, a limestone, a clay unit. So at the site, the aquifer unit that was the target of the investigation was the Palmerton Sandstone, which on here is listed as DEP. And the Palmerton Sandstone, you can see this fold here, this shows the axis of what I determined, what, excuse me, what we determined was the anticline of the site. So the rock where that fold is, the rocks are folded like this and plunging towards the stream. The Palmerton Sandstone, as you move down the site, is actually overlaid by the Buttermilk Falls Clay Unit, which forms a confining layer to the aquifer. And I will get into that in another slide here. So in doing the site geology, we looked at generally where the anticlines and the synclines were, looked at where the Palmerton was, and we prepared a aquifer test plan submitted to and approved by the DEP. And based upon that, and based upon the map geology from the United States Geological Survey, we planned an investigation which included the installation of 17 wells on-site. If you look at this, you'll see these little circles, and each one of these circles represents a drilled well, similar to a well that may be drilled for your home with an air rotary drill. We also had monitored, set up monitoring points for the testing, and then the wetland areas, wetlands were mapped, and monitoring points were put into the wetlands to monitor the response of the wetlands to the pumping tests we took to conduct. And so we had 13 onsite surface water points, and then we also had 15 offsite points. And I apologize for the scale of this. Again, it's in the report, which is available online. But at some distances over a mile, we had residential wells that we monitored. So here's our site in the middle with all our concentrated monitoring, and with approvals, we were able to put monitoring points, say, farther out here to the west. There was a point to the north and also to the northwest. In all, there was 15 offsite wells that were monitored during the testing that we did. And that is the next thing to talk about. We conducted aquifer pumping tests. So we drilled the wells, determined a yield with them through doing what we call step drawdown tests. So you drill a well, how much does it yield? You put a pump in the well, you pump it at various levels and determine its drawdown and how much water the well can supply. Once that was determined, we did three constant rate pumping tests, first using borehole PB2, and that was a 72-hour, three-day test. We followed that. That was done in the dry period of the year. We actually did it in the fall where it was ideal testing because precipitation this fall was about 20% below average at the time we did that. And that was a key point to what we wanted to do. We wanted to assess during dry times what the withdrawal would do. So one of the reasons we wanted to get it done in the fall is that it was such a dry fall. The first test then was followed by a test on the second well, production borehole one. And both of the wells were pumped at about 90 gallons a minute for three days each. Thereafter, a test was conducted on the combined boreholes, pumping borehole one and two at a combined rate of 138 gallons a minute, which is, equates to about 200,000 gallons a day. And we looked at the effects on the aquifer from that, from those testing, and gathered the data from the offsite wells, the on-site wells, the wetland basometers, which were all recorded during the test. Most of them were recorded with electronic measurements, so we put a device in the well that would record on 10-minute or hour intervals and do it routinely so we didn't have to send somebody out to all the wells all during the test. There were some manual measurements done where people may have came out to your well and collected a water level monitor, water level measurement during the test.
Excuse me. Would you restate the amount of the joint pumping test? I think you said yes.
So each pumping test was conducted at approximately 90 gallons a minute, and the joint pumping test was conducted at 170 gallons a minute, which is actually above the proposed withdrawal at the site. So the wells, so the pumping rate at 170 gallons a minute is approximately 245,000 gallons a day combined, whereas proposed withdrawal is 200,000 gallons a day.
Can I say something? This is bullshit. You're screwing us. If my house got out of water, maybe I'll come see one of you guys and you guys can give us all some water. I hope you got enough for everyone.
Nestle has a well protection agreement that would be in place to protect water supplies.
Yeah, go fuck yourself. How's that?
Based upon the completion of the pumping tests, we did analysis which contained in the application, and we determined that the wells are located in the high-yielding Palmerton Sandstone on the ridge and that they are located in a confined aquifer, and the aquifer is confined by the Buttermilk Falls limestone. So this next graph is what we could show is what, it's a nice depiction of what is at the site. Again, this is a publication from a textbook fetter that shows what a confined and unconfined aquifer are.
Why don't you listen to the textbook and not to the reality?
We have cross-sections in the report that are very detailed and that go into actually what this is, but for purposes of explaining some of the concepts, I wanted to have a diagram that didn't have too much on it. But they are in there. I'd be happy to speak with you or explain any of the diagrams in the report.
Because we're stupid, right?
The, this would represent the top of, say, Chestnut Ridge, where rainfall falls onto the site, infiltrates into the sandstone aquifer, and to a point where the aquifer is saturated. And this level here represents the water table in the unconfined aquifer on the ridge. That water then will move down gradient in the aquifer. And as it moves down gradient, there is a layer, a confining layer, which is the Buttermilk Falls limestone unit, which is weathered to a clay unit that confines the groundwater. So the groundwater is not able to come up out of here, although the pressure in the groundwater because of the confining layer would be at this level. So when you drill this well up here on the hill, when you drill down, you'll hit water at a certain level, and that is the groundwater table. When you drill through a confining layer, as in this well, you would drill down, your well may be dry through the confining layer until you hit the sandstone aquifer, and the water in the aquifer would then rise up to the level of the pressure. And so that's, and you see that many wells may drill, you may, say, you drill, hit water at 200 feet, but the water level in your well is at 100 feet. So basically, that's under a confined condition, the water level comes up in the well. So as we moved down the site, we found very similar conditions until we got down to the lower spring into the unnamed tributary where the water is discharging and the tributary is gaining as it moves to the Buckwaw Creek, which would be into the page. So I mean, really, wanted to point out on here that the different wells that we have on the site, and there are wells out there that are very similar to this, and the location of the spring down at the bottom of the site. In map view, what this is, again, this is the, so this would be in cross-section view going up the hill. Now, this is an actual map view that shows what we map on here is the groundwater pressure lines that are represented in that cross-section as it comes down the ridge. And these lines are, go from a higher elevation than the blue lines on the map to a lower elevation, indicating that groundwater is flowing from east to west and discharging in the valley of the unnamed tributary and also towards Buckwaw Creek. The indications from the studies that we show is that the capture from the borehole and from the pumping test indicates, similar to what we look at in the cross-section, is that when we're pumping the borehole, we're pumping water that's coming down the aquifer from the east and coming to the springs, and we're intercepting that water through the production boreholes. What we also show in here from looking at that is from the combined pumping tests, we do what's called a drawdown analysis. So we look at, we have all those monitoring wells, we measured the water levels in the wells, the water levels in those wells at maximum drawdown during the combined pumping test. So the water levels, the pumping test was going on for three days, and the water levels in affected wells were depressed. This is a representation of that. And basically, what you have is either a cone of depression or a drawdown map. It's also called a zone of influence map from the pumping. And what this shows is that with the geology, the pumping is constrained by the geology in that it's coming down the sandstone aquifer. And to the north, we have a confining clay unit also, and then it's followed by a shale unit, which is also resistant to groundwater flow, or at least more so than a sandstone aquifer. And in this area, we had monitoring wells that showed no drawdown during the pumping tests. There was no drawdown also shown to the offsite wells during the pumping tests to the south and to the ones I showed you on the regional map, there were wells that were out in the community. We did show drawdown of the pressure surface in two wells located east, excuse me, to the west, and that is the Tan Josh and Cogan wells showed a drawdown to their, to their, the potentiometric of the groundwater surface in their wells. And that essentially shows us that the water that is coming down from the ridge is captured to the east and is brought down to the boreholes, and then the pressure in the aquifer is limited to this area, which is confined by the geologic units to the north and the south. So the main part of the analysis, after we looked at this, we then assessed, you know, is this sustainable by looking at that? And how we looked at that, at the same time we did the work, we were also gauging stream data and gauging the spring data and looking at the effect on the strains, the wetlands, and the surrounding wells. We looked at that, and again, we saw two wells that were, had a lowering of the groundwater surface, but these wells receive the recharge from the west on the ridge over here, whereas the water that's pumping on the borehole is coming down the ridge from the east. Therefore, the amount of water available to these offsite wells will remain the same because the water that is actually being pumped is coming from the east down the aquifer. However, there's a problem with those wells, there is, if there is determined to be any problem in the wells, although we don't believe they will be, there is a protection commitment that Nestle is willing to put in, and it has several components, which is, one is monitoring. We'd like to put some monitoring wells in there to monitor during the testing to see if there would be any impacts. And if there were impacts, that they would be mitigated with an agreement with the homeowner. The sustainability of the project was then assessed looking at the gauge data, and we followed very conservative Delaware River Basin Commission methods that look at the withdrawal limit and safe yield based on a one- and 25-year drought. Again, we did this during a dry period of time, so we measured stream flows and spring flows, but then the analysis was then using published USGS gauge data in correlation with our stream data to say, well, what would be sustainable if we had a drought that was, that recurred on a 25-year interval or a very dry period? And looking at that, we determined that the safe yield for the aquifer was 525,000 gallons per day during a drought time. And then we looked at that, that would be what would be allowable by the DRBC in a one- and 25-year drought, 525,000 gallons a day based upon the recharge area and the stream flows. And then the sum of our current, the proposed uses are 200,000 gallons a day, which is well below that drought threshold of withdrawal allowed by the Delaware River Basin Commission. So in conclusion, we, the studies that we were tasked to complete and to give our opinion on to sustainability of it, we basically looked at, and looked at the withdrawals of the borehole, production boreholes one and two at approximately 200,000 gallons a day, and then included evaluation of sustainability, offsite impacts, the orientation of the aquifer, the recharge of the aquifer using the water cycle. And based upon this, we then use very conservative drought, drought condition requirements of the Delaware River Basin Commission to determine that this, the withdrawal of 200,000 gallons a day is sustainable. However, as we move forward with the process, we have to get permits from the DEP and the DRBC, and in those permitting processes, there will be permit conditions that will assure that the withdrawal is sustainable during a drought and would even have restrictions for even drier times, drought more than one in 25 years would likely have permit conditions onto it. So in conclusion, our studies have shown that the proposed withdrawal is sustainable even in drought conditions.
My name is Lori Jacob. Do you need a drink of water?
Do I have a question for you? You said your target for the wells is the Palmerton Sandstone Formation?
Yes.
Correct? And it's overlaid by the Buttermilk Falls Formation?
Correct.
However, the Palmerton Sandstone Formation does not end there, if I'm correct? It continues over into Schoolkill County. So is this truly a confined aquifer?
Yes. In the location of the site, it is confined on the lower, like the diagram that I showed. It is confined as you move down the site. On the hill, it isn't confined, and there will be other areas in Schoolkill County where it may not be a confined aquifer. As the upper reaches of this site, it isn't confined. It's confined where it's overlaid by the Buttermilk Falls, also where the water table would be higher than the aquifer.
My map shows that the Palmerton Sandstone Formation is continuous, and as a matter of fact, there are, there were sand quarry operations as close as Little Gap, which I believe is part of the Palmerton Sandstone Formation.
Yeah. The sandstone in general runs along, runs along the ridge of the site, and would run in other areas of the township. And I think, I don't know if this is too big of a, but Little Gap would be, so we have Chestnut Ridge, and generally, the Palmerton Sandstone runs along the ridge, and it runs all the way down, yes, to Little Gap, and I think there's maybe a sand quarry there. There's a quarry further up the ridge to the east, correct?
This formation shows it to be continuous according to the.
Yeah. The statement was that the formation is shown to be continuous, and in the way it's mapped, typically, the rocks of a certain age are continuous in certain areas, yes.
So is not, is this not going to affect a wider area than just the area that you tested?
The way the hydro of the site works is that because of the size of withdrawals and the drawdowns we've shown on the pumping tests, that the effects of the withdrawals would not range out to miles, they're going to be constrained to the north and the south by the geology. We further looked at that, though. We did an analysis, which is in the report, is we did the pumping tests for three days, a combined test, but then we took the drawdown that was shown in those tests and extended them out for 180 days and assuming that there was no rainfall, which is a very, very conservative assumption. So we based upon that, and what the drawdown would be at the site was insignificant. So when we have wells that go away from the site that only have, say, three feet of drawdown within, say, a couple hundred feet of the site or on the site, that drawdown therefore at miles away would be insignificant.
My name is Lori Jacob. My question is this. I have never really been able to get a true understanding of the size, the width, the width and the breadth, as close as you can monitor of the aquifer.
The, again, the cross-section depiction, there's an accurate cross-section depiction in the, in the application. depiction in the, in the application, but the wells that we drilled into the aquifer, into the Palmerton Sandstone?
How many were there?
Oh, we had 17 wells on site, I think the majority of them went into, I'd have to look at the well logs, the majority went into them, but what we found was it was between 180 and I believe 200 feet thick, the Palmerton Sandstone.
Deep, 200, 180, 200?
Um, thickness, it's thickness. So, depending on the elevation where you drill, like if you drill at the top of the hill, you're going to hit the Palmerton Sandstone in the shallow subsurface, but as you move down the hill and you have the confining layer, it'll be at a deeper depth.
So, now, in our area, does it pretty much align with what you're showing there? Like, higher up, it's wider, or, because I'm trying to get an idea of what we actually have here.
In, in this area, again, the Palmerton Sandstone, and this is, this is a map, really, of the recharge area of the Palmerton, it's, 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 it's located in this area, and, you know, from our onsite, it's about 180 to 200 feet thick, and the published publications by the USGS, I think also listed by about 200 feet thick. I'd have to look up that exact number, but it generally is between 180 and 220 feet thick.
Okay, so if, from, using the statistics from your drawdown, has anyone done a study on what impact it would have on the aquifer times that by 20 year, 25 years?
Uh, yes, so we looked at, we looked at this, again, we looked at it on a sustainable basis, so we actually looked at it on a 25-year drought basis, so how much water would be available during a drought time. As we go back to the water cycle, the pumping is, is sustainable to the point where we're only able to pump what rainfall comes to us. So, in 25 years, it'll still be sustainable. Now, rainfall has increased over the years. In the future, though, if, if rainfall decreased, we would certainly, the, the stream flows would show a decrease, and then the production would, would have to also decrease with that.
Okay, and, and I, I know, would you actually be using all 17 wells?
Now, actually, the proposal is for two wells, two production boreholes.
And how deep would they be?
Those wells were two, about 200 feet deep also.
That's all?
Yes, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There's, there's one thing I'd like to just fill in to add to what Lou said, and that is, the Delaware River Basin Commission's requirement of, of withdrawal limit is based on not allowing long-term lowering of water tables. When he referred to the recharge rate, the withdrawal rate cannot exceed the recharge rate, the point is, year in and year out, not to see a lowering of the water table. Out in, in places like Texas, they allow what's called groundwater mining. We do not allow groundwater mining in the eastern United States in the Delaware River Basin. That is not allowed. And so, the, the point about what happens 25 years, year in and year out, the idea is not to allow our water tables to drop. That's a, that's a regulatory requirement.
Yeah, essentially, what the, the aquifer has, has storage in, so there's, after, after many years, this, this has water in it, and, and really what they're allowing us to permit and take from that is how much it, how much it rained on it this year and the next year, and, and we know that by looking at the gauge data, because this water ultimately all discharges to streams, so during the absence of precipitation, what is in the stream is, is groundwater base flow, which is coming from the aquifer. So, the, the storage of the aquifer is not allowed to be depleted, they permit us on what the rainfall allows us to take.
What's the closest gauge you measured?
The closest gauge is an, it's two ways to say it from our herd from around, depending where you are, either the Aquashikola or the Aquashikola Creek in Palmerton.
Is it impacted by the Aquashikola?
This, the Buckwaw Creek, at the
The gauge was impacted by the Aquashikola?
Was our testing impacting the gauge of the Aquashikola?
No. The gauge you're measuring from is impacted by the Aquashikola.
The gauge that we, we actually had gauges on site into the Buckwaw Creek when we did the test, and we correlated those gauges and then our flow gauges to the gauges at the Aquashikola Creek down in Palmerton. And so, during that, say, the time period that we did it, the, the Aquashikola is roughly an 80-square-mile basin, the Buckwaw Creek is basically a 20-square-mile basin, so it's about a quarter of the size. And we did measurements on the streams that, that indicated a very good ratio between the two. So, when we looked at our withdrawal, we looked at what the withdrawal would be on the Buckwaw Creek based upon the gauge of Aquashikola and on our onsite measurement. So, we wouldn't expect to see an effect in, on the Aquashikola gauge, and also on the Buckwaw Creek, the withdrawal was immaterial really in volume to what's flowing by in the, in the, in the Buckwaw Creek.
Did you look at any of the data from the County Conservation District?
County Conservation District, we typically get soil data from, I hadn't looked at any.
You didn't have things done annually?
Oh, the Monroe County, Monroe County did, did annual stream testing, yes, we did look at that data for the Monroe County. It was mainly water quality sampling data they had, they had some, pardon me?
And stream flow.
They had some, they had very sparse stream flow data in there, and what they had the one year that we looked at it, it was very similar to the flows that we had seen on our site, which is, I think at the time, the average flow in the Buckwaw Creek at the time of the sampling was about 12 and a half million gallons a day. So, we did, we did look at that. The water quality data in that indicated that the stream was, from what I could tell, was conforming uses of cold water fishery. So, that's why they, they collected the data to assess the health of the stream, whereas the withdrawal here isn't, is, is not going to really impact the stream, or the streams, or should not impact the stream's water quality.
I have a question.
Your name?
My name is Marissa Strolline. Is this the first time your organization has worked with Nestle?
Um, no, it's not.
Okay, how many other water extraction plants have you reviewed for them?
Um, we have, we've worked with Nestle, I think some of the first work I've done with Nestle is probably in 1999, when I first started looking at sites for them.
Okay, have you rejected a single application?
Yes, certainly, a lot of applications don't even make it to the application process, because we come in, we do our sustainability analysis, and I provide recommendations to my client to say, this site is or isn't sustainable. So, a lot of, a lot of the sites we've looked at for Nestle didn't, didn't go to permitting because of sustainability issues, yes.
All of these questions and studies were also done in Macosta County, Michigan, where Nestle actually did end up damaging their watershed, they were sued in court and they lost. After they were sued in court, instead of backing down or agreeing to drill for less water or working with the community, they continued to try to sue the community, do everything they could, to continue drawing the same amount of water. So, my question is, what are your reassurances that your studies aren't just as faulty as theirs?
Um, I, I can't speak, I cannot speak for the Michigan studies, but I know in Pennsylvania and the water permitting climate in Pennsylvania with the multi-regulatory commissions and the, and the, the push and the need for the water to be sustainable to get the permits, that
Why are there so many people that were affected in the communities that you've already drilled here saying their piece about this?
I, I don't know of any, of water supplies that we have permitted, I, I can't think of any affected, any parties that were
Actually, Nestle likes to claim that they've never damaged a neighboring well, the truth is that there are plenty of people who have made various complaints about damage to their wells, Nestle has just never decided to compensate any of those people.
Again, I can't speak for Nestle, I have worked for them and, and worked for other clients, they have been, in my, my mind exemplary, gone above and beyond to assure that there were, there were no impacts. At this site, there's a great example for that, in that the, the withdrawal on the site is located in, in an aquifer that, then here's the drawdown from that aquifer, across from that aquifer is, is a clay unit, from that clay unit is, is the shale unit, and from that shale unit is another hydraulic divide that, that is the Buckwaw Creek. So, as a hydrogeologist, I would expect no impact to the shales or the stream, and, and in discussing with Nestle, they said to me, how can you assure us that we're not going to have any effect on the well, on the, on the residents? And the best way to do that would be to drill wells here. So, Nestle went the extra mile to drill the wells to gather the data to give assurance that there wouldn't be impacts.
Are you aware that the site they're going to be drilling on was used as a dump for a long time, and that there are actually gas tankers down there that have been there for decades? How do you think that will impact the quality of the water they will be drilling for?
Nestle is very concerned about the quality of the water, and it would impact their business if the water quality wasn't up to their standards.
So, drilling from the dump, that's not a concern of theirs?
It, it is a concern, and as part of our studies, we did phase one environmental assessment, we looked at environmental records, we looked at records of DEP, and we found no indication of, of dumping at the site. There used to be ponds at the bottom, and the ponds are still there, they would fill them with silt, they would bring the silt and put it up top.
Sir, there are people in this room that learned how to shoot by shooting rats at that dump. Everyone in this community knows that that dump existed, and even though some stereotypes certainly aren't true, as to borrow a phrase from my friend, this is not too bad for a bunch of dumb Dutchmen showing up and asking these questions, but I have to tell you, some stereotypes aren't true, I'm telling you right now, if there was a dump in this area, I can't even imagine what was in it. So, you were looking at papers that would not even have that information on it, that's meaningless that you looked at, no one was reporting on that in a little backwater town that they were using a sand pit as a dump? Are you telling me that none of you down there cared to see what was in there before you started drilling there for water to feed to people?
We, we drilled numerous wells, we did environmental studies on the site, we didn't find any indications of the dump. Nestle is very concerned with the water quality, if you know where that dump is, I'm sure that you'd be happy, Eric, to show Eric where it is. They are very concerned with their water quality, and the water quality testing showed excellent quality.
Can we have your next question, please?
I'd also like to point out that Eric, that gentleman up there who works for Nestle, sits on the DRBC, which is one of the regulatory committees that you mentioned.
I believe that's incorrect, ma'am, he's not, he's not a member of the Delaware River Basin.
Oh, he's in advisory position, my mistake, and actually, he's been shown the dump, I believe, has he been shown the dump?
Yes.
Oh, he has been shown the dump, so that's been taken care of.
I, I respectfully disagree with that opinion.
Was he a opinion that he has been shown the dump? Or the opinion that he is
That he is, you could speak to Eric directly, however.
And what about, what about the well that they lost over there? They probably hit a Buick or something.
So, my last question, I'm sure greatly to your relief, are you legally liable if this damages our watershed? Because these were your studies that assured Nestle that we would be safe.
We take, take my, my license as a geologist very seriously, it's my livelihood, when I'm tasked to evaluate the sustainability, we take it very seriously. In this event, we did multiple studies, drilled numerous wells to evaluate that.
I think you're saying safety, not
You didn't answer the question.
Safety, not sustainability.
Hi, I have a, my name is Desiree Jacob, I have some questions about things you did not address. It's common knowledge that when you drill in, in sandstone or limestone, as opposed to shale, that especially limestone, that is very, the dirt gets very loose, it's very porous, the dirt gets very loose, that's an absolute geological fact, okay? Not so much in shale as in limestone and sandstone, especially limestone. Now, I know for a fact, I mean, I have geology in college, and I was referring back, I know it's four years ago, but I was referring back to my books, and they were saying that it's very easy for limestone to get into the water, and we turn our faucet on, there will be dirt in the water, especially in limestone. I, I think that's a very feasible thing that's going to happen here, no doubt about it.
Um, the aquifer that they're targeting is, is a sandstone aquifer that's overlaid by what used to be a limestone aquifer that weathered, has weathered to clay, so it's not, it's not a classic limestone. And in this area, in other areas, maybe you look at your book, there is concerns in limestone with karst topography or sinkholes, and that is not the case at this site.
So, clay cannot get loose and, and bring dirt into our water? Clay?
In, in the context of how the wells are constructed, the clay will be cased off and the wells will be into the Palmerton Sandstone, and if the dirt, if, or clay were to come out of the aquifer, they would get, it would be into Nestle's trucks and, and not out into the environment.
Okay, all right, another question I have is, during the test, I have the Right to Know Act, and in the Right to Know Act, even at the, Sharon Salt in the, in the Right to Know Act actually calls Bill Geddy up and says, you know what, the hot water is starting to smell like sulfur here during the test, and several other places said they had dirt in their, their water, another, one man said that his water was still yellow several weeks after the test. So, you know that, that does happen, that does disturb the dirt and, and the ground when you extract water, that's a fact, and it happened during the test. I have it in the Right to Know Act paperwork.
Um, I'm sure Mr. Andrews is happy to look at your house and your well for that, we certainly would also.
Well, not mine, I'm lucky, I live where there's shale, I'm the lucky one.
The aquifer and the monitoring network is set up is that during the testing, this is where the impact was, was, was shown in the wells, there was no drawdown or impacts to wells that were offsite. It was a very dry period, and
Oh, cool.
During the time.
Do you know where our house is at?
Take less showers.
Now, my next question is, you, my, my lab professor at Kutztown was doing his dissertation on earthquakes in Pennsylvania. So, if there is a, an earthquake, where I live, shale, because I was always told, oh, you have a perceived impact where you live, it's shale, nothing's going to happen to you, there's no way that your water can get drawn over past the Buckwaw, that's not true. If there would be an earthquake and cracks would come into the, into the shale from earthquakes, which Pennsylvania does have, how do you know that the water, as a matter of fact, Mr. Geddy said to me, your well can go dry in two hours where you live, if, under certain conditions. He didn't say what they were, but I'm referring back to my professor's dissertation in earthquakes in Pennsylvania, that cracks could come into the shale. What about that?
Um, I'd say that the likelihood for impacts to, to the wells from an earthquake would be highly unlikely. I also think that
Well, why is he doing his dissertation on earthquakes in Pennsylvania?
Um, because earthquakes occur in Pennsylvania, and they
Well, then, so that causes cracks and shale.
Earthquakes can cause damage to structures, can cause also damage to geologic formations, and that is something that, why during this process, there would be monitoring to go on. If there was an earthquake that would affect the water supply or that supply, there, there would certainly be testing to see if that earthquake or the withdrawal from the site as a result of that earthquake would affect an offsite supply.
So, I am right, that cracks could occur, and it could be drawn over through the suction over to the other side from where the shale is in tier two?
Now, I would, no, there's, there's
And tier three.
There's, there's several, there's several protective factors from the site to the north and across the stream. One, this, the, it would be more likely if there were cracks caused that you would drain water from the stream, the stream is a hydraulic divide, there's millions of gallons of water flowing down the stream that would fill into the cracks. South of that, you have the shale, you have the clay unit, and then you have the aquifer. So, very highly unlikely for something like that
But I know that shale, we're more protected from, you know, getting dirt or, or getting where we are having our wells go dry, but if we do have a problem with our shale, it's real, it's real expensive to drill, to drill through that, and you've got to really pound and pound. So, anybody who has shale is going to have a real expensive job when they have to have a well drill, yes or no?
I, I would think that if an earthquake affected your well, it would not be the result of Nestle.
Well, I'm not talking about an earthquake now, I'm saying that if someone who has shale has got to have a well drill, it's going to be real expensive, because you've got to pound through that shale like there's no tomorrow.
I don't know why drilling a well before or after an earthquake would be more
I'm not talking about after work earthquake, I'm on to another subject. I'm on to the subject that if somebody who's in another tier, tier two or three where there's shale, and their well does go dry, it's a bigger fortune to get a well drilled than if you have sandstone, right?
Our studies showed that those shales will not be affected by the withdrawal at the site.
That's what I keep hearing, but I don't believe it.
We have a stream unit, and we have the shale, and we have monitoring points during the testing, there will be ongoing monitoring during the permitting and also during the withdrawals
But that's not what I asked you, I said if it does happen, and it can happen.
If it does happen, Nestle has, which is, I believe, highly unlikely, given the hydrologic barriers between
That's not what I asked you, I asked if it's very expensive to drill a well in shale. That's what I asked you. And it's very difficult to pound through shale as opposed to sandstone, right? And limestone, yes or no?
It really depends upon your environment. Many wells are drilled in shale, homeowner wells are drilled in shale, they supply
Well, I spoke to many, many people who are in that business, and they told me, you've really got to pound to get through, through shale, you've really got to pound.
There will be offsite, no offsite impacts into the shale to the north, and drilling your well, whether, it, it's not going to be affected by the Nestle withdrawal, it's going to be affected by the local conditions.
Well, that's ridiculous. One last question, the Marcellus gases, I was told by a very intelligent civil engineer that the biggest problem we have here after continuous extraction of water is going to be that the Marcellus gases can be drawn into our aquifer, and forever we will never be able to drink our water. And unlike granite aquifers, which are not connected, because we do not have granite here, we have shale and sedimentary, and so forth, that all the aquifers are interconnected. unlike granite aquifers. Therefore, all of our aquifers could eventually be affected by any of the extractions that are going on, especially over a long-term period of extractions.
I disagree with the premise. I respectfully disagree with your position.
Well, I was told by several engineers, environmental engineers, that Marcellus gases can end up in our aquifer, and isn't this true? If that does happen, you can never drink the water. All our horses will never be able to drink the water. All our cows will never be able to drink the water. And we won't ever be able to drink the water, but that's not as bad for us as cows and horses who need enormous amounts of water every day. And I don't know, how do you expect to take care of all the animals around here if something happens? People have horses, donkeys, llamas. How are you going to bring water in to a farm where there is no water that has...because it's been sucked out for reasons you're denying?
Again, I disagree with your premise. The water regulations are such that we cannot affect offsite users. There's a permit condition and a current permit that says if we affect an offsite user, if Nestle affects it, they have to replace their well.
So you're going to bring a lot of water for all my donkeys and all my llamas? You're going to bring in big, big things for my donkeys and people who have tons of horses here? You're going to really take care of the animals when something happens?
If something happened, absolutely, we'd permit condition and a regulatory requirement that the regulatory agency would pull their permit if they impacted wells and did not address it.
That wasn't the question.
Next question. We have the next question, please.
My name is Kevin Leinhardt. My question is, when you did this testing, where does the water pump to?
Yes, so the water extraction on the site, when we did the pumping tests, again, it's hard to see, but when you come down, the production portals are here, the water went in a pipeline that came down, and here's Rick Gower's building. A little bit further to the west of that, it was discharged to the stream at this location.
So it was pumped out and put directly back into the buckwal?
It was pumped, yes, from up gradient and pumped to a down gradient location in the buckwal, yes.
So no hydraulic pressure was changed whatsoever? Look it out and put it right back?
The buckwal, the flow in the buckwal is away from the site and the discharge location was looked at by the DEP for that very purpose. We look at that when we do a pump test. We don't want to do what's called recycling of the water. We don't want to pump the well and discharge the water right next to the well because you could have that effect that you're talking about. So in this case...
Like you took the water out and you put it right back?
No, we did not. We took the water out of the groundwater.
You hauled it away?
And we put it into the stream, which is a surface water, and that stream was located across two hydraulic divides and downgraded the site.
Oh, I'm not a zoologist or...but my well is about 150 feet from the buckwal, and I can tell you firsthand, when the stream goes up, the head of my well goes up. When it goes down, my head of the well goes down.
That's correct.
So basically, you're taking it out and putting it right back during your testing. You're not changing any hydraulic pressure.
In the aquifer, I showed you the map of the drawdown, we changed the hydraulic pressure in the sandstone.
Simply?
I am trying to answer the question, sir. Am I changing hydraulic pressure where?
In the groundwater and the buckwal.
In this instance, no. The groundwater, the drawdown clearly showed that there was no impact to the wells to the north or adjacent to the buckwal through the pumping of it. The pressure head was affected in the Palmerton sandstone, but not into the shale to the north or into the buckwal creek.
Right. But you were only pumping water out and putting it right back into the ground without changing hydraulic pressure. As you hauled it away, all that water you pumped out, you may have seen different results.
I disagree. We professionally, we took this discharge location was specifically chosen to not impact the pumping of the test. So the water that was discharged was not recirculated back into the aquifer, it was put into the surface water and flowed into the buckwal creek.
Can you explain to everybody why when the buckwal rises, that the head of my well rises?
If your well...
And it goes down, the head of my well goes down? I've been monitoring that for about 15 years before you were positively even thought of, so I know this for a fact.
Certainly. The stream, if your well is next to the stream and it's in the shale where the buckwal creek is located, then the wells' water levels are affected by the stream water levels.
Okay. So what about all the people that live right here next to the buckwal?
Their stream, if their well is also in the shale next to the buckwal, their well would also be affected by the water levels in the buckwal.
Okay. Now, my second question would be, you talked about during drought times, and that would not affect your 200,000 gallon a day withdrawal. Is that right?
No, that is not correct. During...there's several layers of permitting. One, we did the testing during drought times.
No, it wasn't actually a drought.
It was a very dry fall. We were about 20%...
But it was not a drought.
It wasn't a declared drought. It was at the time of testing, we were about 20% low on a rainfall, and it was a dry fall.
20% is not a drought.
That's not a drought.
Okay, so what we did then in the testing was, we simulated a drought by looking at drawdown at 180 days without rainfall. When it goes to the permitting process, the further looks at that, they will look at pass-by requirements onto the stream. So in other words, does our withdrawal affect the surface water and to what extent does that affect it? So if there is a significant drought, we have to maintain a certain amount of pass-by to the streams to protect aquatic organisms. So that's the next level. The third level is if there is a drought emergency declared in the permit, there will be a drought mitigation plan, and there is high potential that they would have to stop pumping the water if it's a severe drought.
Okay, because about seven out of the last 20 years we've been in drought season where they've highly recommended that we not wash our cars or water yards, which is, say, 20,000 people at about 10 gallons a day would be about your 200,000 gallons a day.
There would likely be...
They instructed us not to, you know, wash your car, but you're saying that won't affect you?
No, I said the opposite. I said would affect. There are several layers of permitting requirements in there that go into effect during droughts. One is, we did it during a dry time. We then looked at it at 180 days with no precipitation, was very unrealistic.
Simulated drought at 20%?
No, the drought, it was 20% below rainfall when we did the testing. And then we, after the testing, we looked at it and said, "What would our drawdown be in these wells if we had no rain for 180 days?" And we looked at that. So we have that drought level then that we looked at, the sustainability. Above that, when we go through permitting, we also look at the pass-by, like the stream flows, what are the stream flows during that? And that'll be a requirement in the permitting to maintain certain levels of the stream flows. And then above that, there'll be a drought mitigation plan if there's a severe drought, like you have your water curtailed, there may be curtailment that the Delaware River Basin Commission may impose also on the permitting.
A different meaning there in California, right?
Has Nestle ever dried up a town? Has that ever been happened? I wouldn't hear him say that. Has it ever happened?
I would have to defer to Eric, but in my experience, I wouldn't think that based upon the practices that Eric does and...
He's right there, ask him.
Short answer, no.
What's the long answer?
Does anybody here disagree?
I listened very closely to your presentation and I thank you for it. I listened with interest, you referred to the north and the south. Tell the people that you monitored two wells directly to the west. You impacted one around 10 and 1/2 feet and the other one about 9 and 1/2 feet. I could give you the names, but that wouldn't be fair to them. And in your report, you put it very nicely that only two wells were impacted. But sir, there are eight more wells there right adjacent to that that you never monitored. So the two you didn't monitor were impacted by your own report. I have the copies here, I'll be glad to share them with you or anyone else who wants to see them. The second thing I listened with great interest, you keep referring to the water coming down from the top of the mountain. Am I correct there?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't own any water, I want to make that perfectly clear. But I own 140 acres on top of that mountain where that water, by Eric and other people's admission, comes from. The only thing I can think of what's really happening is, you're capturing that water as it comes down the mountain. It's not your water, it's not my water. I asked the question, whose water is it? You capture it, you sell it at a high profit for something that isn't yours. You're taking it and it's really not yours. In my upbringing, that used to be called stealing.
Regarding the first point, I mentioned in my presentation about the impacts to the wells, and certainly Nestle would prefer to monitor more wells in that area. And going forward with the permitting, they would like to put monitoring points there to assure that the impacts to those wells...
We wouldn't trust them. I wouldn't trust them, I wouldn't trust your organization either, sir.
I have a professional license, sir, I think you...
You monitored two of my springs and one well.
You're paid by Nestle.
But address that last comment I made, too.
I guess that's more of a legal question, I would think. I defer to Mr. Weston, if I may.
First, I strongly disagree with your characterization, sir. Under Pennsylvania's common law, anybody who owns property has a right to use water on the property. Nestle, in this case through its lease, has the right to use water on the property. That's not stealing, that's using...
That's a legal right.
The legal right. And let me finish. One of the responsibilities of any user, whether it's a homeowner or it's Nestle or anybody else, is at the same time to make sure that they don't adversely affect other people. You have to make, wait, you have to make reasonable use of the water, and that's why we set up the kind of river basin commissions and agencies that we now have. Historically, the courts had to deal with this after the fact. That was not a good arrangement. You didn't want to wait until a drought and have a problem and have the courts then determine it. So what we did is we set up administrative agencies in a permitting process to require the kind of testing that has now been done and to prove before you get a permit that you're unlikely to have an effect. And then beyond that, we set up laws under the Delaware River Basin and at DEP that if an effect occurred, that the person who caused the effect had to take care of it. Now, that was the change in law from what our common law was. And it happens to be, I think, a step forward from what our common law was.
For who?
Well, sir, I'll explain for who, frankly, all of you. Back in the 1950s, there was a Supreme Court case called DeGuy and Kento versus New Jersey Zinc Company. Under the old law of Pennsylvania, New Jersey Zinc Company was allowed to dry up all of Saucon Valley. We reversed that law in Pennsylvania, and the Delaware River Basin Commission enforces that reversal of law.
Explain your first-in concept and the shared use.
Okay, you're going back to the last meeting.
I'm going back to your previous meeting.
Section 3.3 of the Delaware River Basin Compact declares that no permit, no allocation is a prior appropriation of water. Prior appropriation is a term in water law which is called first-in time, first-in right. Out in California or Texas and other places that follow prior appropriation, if you got onto the land and you wanted to take a certain amount of water, you got it and nobody else coming later could have water. And if it got dry, the first guy got all the water they wanted before anybody else, any of their neighbors got any water. That was prior appropriation. The Delaware River Basin does not follow that. They follow the principle of reasonable use, which means...
Mr. Kovacs told me exactly different from what you're telling me.
Well, please look at section 3.3 of the Delaware River Basin Compact that was built into the law. I'm going to give this back to you. I think we need to move on because there's other presenters here, where there's other presenters here, and once we get through that, then we'll take your other questions.
I have an important question on the USGS data.
We'll take them at the end. We need to move on. Next presenter?
I'd like to hear his question.
Let the man speak with us. We're here for questions.
He stood there for 20 minutes.
Serious question. We had to listen to you for a half hour.
I'd like to start with a general question. I'd like to start with a general question so we can see where we're going.
Unless you want to not hear the traffic impact?
Well, first of all, these nice gentlemen...
And does this pertain to the hydrogeological...
Everything does, basically. I'm not a conveyor, I live in the township here. I'm a physician. I've dealt with scientific neighbors before. Some of them are not worth their salt, some are. Acting said, let me ask you this. You gentlemen from Nestle, who can speak to Nestle's policies?
That's not relevant at this time. I apologize, I apologize, it's not relevant at this time.
Let me just ask this then.
No, you...
Okay, I'll come back.
Thank you very much. Thank you, too.
I have a specific numerical question about water, very quick, okay, three seconds. And that is, there was a number rattled off at the beginning of the meeting of 245,000 gallons, max. I'd like to know how that relates to the 525,000 gallons per day sustainable, that they can take over 500,000 because the residents would be much less than 25,000, and how it relates to the 200,000 gallons average per day that we got last meeting?
Certainly. The proposed project is for 200,000 gallons a day average withdrawal over a monthly period. That is what we're proposing to permit with the DRBC. The pumping tests were conducted at a combined rate of 170 gallons a minute, which is 245,000 gallons a day. And that would be what we petitioned DEP for the maximum pumping rate that would be in the permit for that. You also mentioned the 525,000 gallons a day? The 525,000 gallons a day was a watershed average based upon a 1 in 25-year drought of what water would be available in the basin. And withdrawals above that level would not be allowed to be permitted by the Delaware River Basin Commission because it would be above the 1 in 25-year drought sustainability. So our permitted volume is 200,000, what we're looking for is 200,000 gallons a day on a monthly average, which is well below the 525,000 gallons.
My question then, my really question is, is it going to be the case that you'll never be able to take more than 245,000 gallons on a given day? Or is that not what that means?
With the current, with the pumping from the boreholes to the silos, that would be the maximum and instantaneous withdrawal per minute. Be 170 gallons a minute and average that through a day, 1,440 minutes would be 245 gallons a day pumped, correct?
Never more?
So you'll never be able to get over 245,000 towards the 500,000 that's sustainable?
Oh, you guys are cute.
Correct.
Correct.
Because as Mr. Weston, there's other uses that maybe in the basin, there's water that must be left for other potential uses.
I think I got it, thank you.
That's so nice of you.
Excuse me. I've had my hand up, I've been waiting patiently. I haven't jumped in front of anybody. He made a statement about the water flow that had no effect on the flow of the buckwal that on the days that you pumped?
It had minimal effect. We were pumping during the test, I'd have to look in the report, I think the flows in the buckwal were, I think, believe, 8 to 12 million gallons a day. And our pumping decreased the flow at the culvert flume into the buckwal, I believe about 63 gallons a minute.
Do you have the data from the gauge station in Aquashackle?
The Aquashackle, yes, we used that gauge data then to assess the base flow of the site, yes.
And you could see as the days that you pumped, it was a, you're saying it wasn't a drought, but there was less water. It was going down like this, and you could see when you drew down, it dropped down like that.
We...
And then it went down, then you drew down again and dropped all the way down like that, and then it got recovered again. Every time you drew down, you could see.
We saw that effect in the wells, yes.
And you saw it down, but you said you didn't see any effect at the site?
We didn't see effects to the flow...
How was the effect in Palmer?
No, there was no effect shown in Palmerton.
The Aquashikla?
At the Aquashikla gauge.
In Palmer, that's Palmer. But you saw it in there?
No, we did not see it in the effects of the gauge. The water, the water-
I saw the, I saw the gate, I saw it.
But we'd have to correlate that to our test. The flow in the stream was millions of gallons a day, and we decreased the flow at the site 62 gallons a minute, I believe, I have to look at the report, which is about 100,000 gallons a day, which would not be detectable in, at the gauge in Aquashikla.
Well, the buckwaa flow was in the Aquashikla.
Correct.
So, you're saying we had a drought?
We were saying it was a dry period, we had 20% less rainfall at the time.
What made it recover like that, that quick?
I would have to, with you, look at the gauge at the Aquashikla. The flow at that point-
I think the recovery came from you pumping it back into the buckwaa.
The flow at the site was about 12 million gallons a day in the Buckwaa Creek. The Aquashikla watershed is about 40, is about four times bigger. So, the flow there would be about 48 million gallons a day during the testing. A difference in 63 gallons a minute would not be seen several miles downstream in the Aquashikla gauge.
What caused that?
I would, you'd have to show me the gauge, and we'd have to look at that, and we could-
Well, you said that you used the USGS data from the gauge station?
We used the long-term data from the gauge station to determine what the base flows were in the basin, and how much groundwater discharge was coming out.
Sir, could I have your name?
Jerry Med.
One thing I can say is, is I looked at that same data and had lots of questions, but we're fortunate as a township that Hanover Engineering is here today in regards to the environmental impact statement, and we also have our own hydrogeologist that's reviewing it in detail. And please, we welcome and encourage anybody here who, since we're not hydrogeologists and don't have that background, that in-depth background, to make a comment. Any specific questions you have, please email, and if you don't have email, call Ann, and she'll take that down and get it to, in this case, the planning commission, and we'll get it to the zoning hearing board and/or the board of supervisors. So I encourage you to do that.
Thank you.
I just have a real quick recharge question, please. I think it's imperative. My name's Patrice Jenta, and the question's directed at the hub. Gentlemen, you just explained all the typical max.
I would ask you to send that to Ann, and I'll make sure she'll give it to me personally, and I will answer that.
Why? Why? Why can't I ask a question?
Because we're trying to get the rest of the data.
This is a public forum, this is why we're all here, we are all giving a part-time. I just want to know why the Buckwaa Creek, if you're saying that the recharge rate is adequate, that the Creek will never be dried up, that the recharge rate, that downflow, all of that pressure was going to maintain it, we know for a fact the buckwaa went bone dry in 1972. 1972. There were, we have eyewitnesses, there were maybe 1/10 of the amount of people in Conkle Town that are here, that are here today. There wasn't development like there is today, yet the stream went dry. How could that happen according to every one of your projections that claim that the recharge would never allow that to happen? I think that's important.
If the buckwaa went dry in 1972, how comes the stream at my house did not go dry? That would have had to, it runs into the buckwaa, is considerably smaller, I lived there, that little princess has never gone dry. Patrice, I don't want, I don't want an argument out of you, I'm just telling you.
Your stream has a different headwater than the buckwaa. Your stream, the princess is fed from upstream, it's not fed from the buckwaa, the buckwaa is fed-
I know that, I know where every tributary is for the little princess. I'm trying to get its name back for it, and I'm not getting anywhere. However, you think then if the buckwaa went dry, I'm just using a bucket of water-
No, because they don't-
How could it keep on running? Wouldn't it have gone dry too?
Because your headwaters come from a different source than the buckwaa. The buckwaa does not feed the princess until later on.
Well, I'm going to have to talk to somebody because I can't figure that one out. I thought when went dry, took the other one along.
Well, it's true, if in fact it worked prior to, even prior to where they co-joined, but that's not in fact where they do. Okay, so.
I'd like to call Earl Armitage to explain the traffic study. Thank you.
Okay, as Tim mentioned, my name is Earl Armitage, I work for Penoni, we completed the traffic impact study for the site. And I'm going to start out with, in order to determine the scope of our traffic impact study, we met with both Pendott and the township, along with the township's traffic engineer, Hanover, to determine exactly what we were going to study. We determined what intersections we were going to study, what roadways, what intersections we needed to look at traffic volumes and operations, and also where we need to look at site distance. The first part of our study included a truck route study, and I know this map is a little hard to see, but I have a couple other slides that zoom in a little bit further. We, in order to determine the truck route, that would be the best route from this site to NESL's bottling facility in Brighton Threll, we drove a variety of different routes. We primarily looked at all state routes that are owned by Pendott in order to avoid local township roads. So the two routes that I show here, the one in red is the primary truck route, the one in yellow is a secondary truck route. All of them are on state-owned roadways. They own the roads, they maintain the roads. If I zoom in real close, you can kind of see the site is right here. This is Conkle Town Road, this is Chestnut Ridge Drive. The primary truck route would involve the trucks leaving the site, making a right turn out of the unnamed township road, onto Chestnut Ridge Drive, they would then proceed to the stop sign at Conkle Town Road, they would make a left, they would travel west until they get to the intersection of Silver Spring Boulevard, where they would make a right turn, they would head up Silver Spring Boulevard, north until they get all the way up here, they would head west over to the turnpike to-
209, right?
Correct.
Are you serious?
Correct, that is the route they would take. The secondary route, and I'll get into site distance, the secondary route, because right now there is a bridge up here that has a posted weight restriction, so the trucks could not travel over that. That bridge is scheduled to be replaced by Pendott as part of their P3 initiative, the Rapid Bridge Replacement Project, and that's on the schedule for 2017. They're going to have to get the biz to replace that bridge and then remove that restriction.
Wide enough, how you're going to make a left there?
I'll be able to answer all your questions as I go through, yes. The, after the bridge is replaced, this will be the primary route. The secondary route, the vehicles would turn left onto Conkle Town Road, and they would continue west all the way over to Palmerton, and they would head south on 248 at that location.
Wow, what about kids with school buses?
The next part of our study was levels of service. We were asked to look at, how does this development impact the existing conditions? So in order to do that, we had to collect traffic counts. So we went out to the intersections, we counted every car that turned right, left, or went straight through the intersections. We also put counters out on the roadway to count every car that went by 24 hours a day for a seven-day period, and that's also in the report as well. So we gathered all the existing data. The way that we measure levels of service is very similar to grades you would get, A through F. Obviously, A is better than an F. A means that the intersection or the roadway functions well with very little delay. F means there's a lot of congestion, and the average vehicle is sitting at the stop sign in this case for over 50 seconds. We took the existing conditions to figure out where we were as a baseline, we added the truck traffic, and then we would see how the analysis comes out. The existing conditions is shown here on the left in this column for existing AM peak hour. This is a PM peak hour, so on a weekday, the commuter peak times, and then also on a Saturday, we were asked by the township and Pendott to look at a Saturday. The no build for 2017 is basically taking the existing volumes we have in 2015, we just grow those based on approved rates that Pendott provides, assuming general growth in the area with other development, and then we add our traffic on top of that. And this is for all traffic studies for NESL or any studies that are done for traffic. And then this column on the right, the third column in each of these, is the build condition. And as you can see on this chart, this is for the intersections of Chestnut Ridge and Conkle Town Road, and Chestnut Ridge and the unnamed township road, where the site traffic's going to come out. Everything on these charts is showing a levels of service A, with the exception over here, we have one B. And that's just because, as you could see on the previous table here, when you go over 10 seconds, it goes from an A to a B. So it's very close to a B, adding the small amount of truck traffic made it go over to a B. So, this was for two trucks an hour, or also, two trucks an hour going to the site, but the trucks have to go to the site and leave the site, so it's four trips here. At the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion on maximum trucks. What are the maximum trucks? Are there days that you're going to be running hundreds and hundreds of trucks? The answer to that is no. We went back since the last meeting, and as we talked about, we determined what the maximum number of trucks are that we can run, and that is three trucks an hour. Actually, it's less than three, but we rounded up for the analysis to be conservative. This table is the same table as the last one, but we prepared this since our meeting last month because this was a big concern. This is three trucks an hour, or six truck trips an hour. And as you can see, there's very little impact as a result of that because the volumes are so low compared to other developments that you would typically see. So, in addition to these two intersections, we were asked by the township to analyze another intersection, which we're in the process of collecting data for, and that is the intersection of Conkle Town Road and Silver Spring Boulevard, the T-intersection there. So we're collecting that data, and that will be added to our report. The next part of our evaluation was site distance measurements. One of the concerns was, let's take a look at what the site distance measurements are today and what they would need to be. So in accordance with Pendott's criteria, we evaluated what the site distance would be. And what you'll see here, and it is a little difficult to see, we have three different colored lines shown. The blue line is the available site distance, the red line is the minimum required stopping site distance based on the speed limit, and then there's this little green line that is the minimum stopping site distance because there is a 25 mile an hour truck speed for any trucks that will be heading south on Chestnut Ridge Drive, and that is a regulatory posting, not a warning sign. So at the intersection of the unnamed township road, there will be a need for some clearing, some overgrowth along here to meet the available, the required site distance through here. And then looking to the right, obviously, there's an intersection. You come to a stop-controlled intersection of Conkle Town Road, it doesn't go through here, so we have site distance to that intersection. We did that also for the next intersection. This is as you come up to the stop sign at Chestnut Ridge Drive and Conkle Town Road. Again, same color coordination we had before, the minimum required is shown in red, the blue is what the available site distance is that was measured at that location. And one of the things I forgot to point out is, these are existing intersections, they're not new intersections that we're adding that we would need to get Pendott's permission to permit as a new intersection. They're there today. Cars and trucks can drive through them today. Next intersection we were asked to look at is Silver Spring Boulevard and Conkle Town Road, which I just talked about, we're doing the additional analysis for. The red line is the required site distance based on the posted speed limit. So the speed limit in this area is 45 miles an hour, so you could see that recently, I'm not exactly sure when it happened, but there was some embankment removal along here to improve that sight line. We also added the green line here. As you come through this curve and the next intersection, there's 15 mile an hour advisory plaques that advise you, you're coming through a curve, you should slow down to 15. That's what's shown in these green lines here. The site distance to the right is this red line, again, if a vehicle tried to come through here at 45 miles an hour, they would need to see from here all the way through to there. These are both state roads, this is Silver Spring Boulevard and Conkle Town Road. And the last intersection that we had looked at was Corral Road. No traffic for this site would travel on this, this is a township road, it's a stop sign condition. Everybody, I would assume, knows there is a building right here that does affect site distance, so when vehicles pull out, what we observed is, a lot of them would stop further back so they could see around the building before they would pull out. But this certainly does create a site distance obstruction looking to the right, and that is something that we do recommend, the township works with Pendott, to address. The, so that is the end of the slides as far as what we looked at for site distance and analysis. I would certainly be happy to answer any questions unless there's something else I missed. I guess I'll defer to you, I'm sorry.
My name is Linda Kyle, I live approximately a mile from the drilling site. Are you familiar, gentlemen, I'm assuming you all are from NESL, are you familiar with the school up here, and the community center on Conkle Town Road? Eric?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. A couple of times I heard you say that you would not use township roads. If there was an accident, and there was a death, the state police would shut that road down for anywhere between four and six hours. Is NESL going to shut down their production for that time? That's my first question.
Don't come up my way.
Good question. If Conkle Town Road was closed due to an accident, yes, we would stop our operations.
Okay, you would not take an alternate route on a township road?
If, no, not onto the township road. For example, if there was an accident on Silver Spring Road, the secondary route that was identified by Earl on these maps would be a potential route for us to continue using.
Okay, so you would not, you would shut down for those four to six hours? And when the attorneys came the next day, and the road again was shut down for four to six hours, you would again limit your traffic, you would stop traffic?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Don Moore. I was wondering if, well, quite frankly, I was rushed with the last guy, and he again get it through you, is the three trucks per hour or six trips, is that related, rounded up, is that related to the 245 figure?
Yeah, actually, I took a cheat sheet here, so I didn't bring a calculator up. 200,000 gallons is the average per day. We divide that by a truck which carries the 6,500 gallons, in one truck, you get just under 31 trucks. If we divide that by the 17 hours a day that they're permitted to operate, it would be 1.8 trucks. So we rounded that up to two, and that was an average. And then for the maximum, we actually looked at the maximum rate that was discussed about what could be pumped out in a given day. And also looked at the storage, just to get a worst-case scenario. That came out to 305,000 gallons. We divided that by 6,500, we got 47 trucks. We divided that by 17 hours, we got 2.8 trucks, and we rounded that up to three. So instead of the 47 trucks, we looked at the 60 trucks.
Okay, got that. Now, next question. I'm hearing about the study you did about the impact at intersections. What about the impact on people riding on these routes and getting stuck behind trucks? Is there anything in your study that analyzes how they're going to be to be? By trucks obeying, what I'm hearing is a maximum speed limit for trucks, et cetera, going up hills, going through the gears?
Sure. The speed limit for the trucks would not be affected in any way by what NESL is doing. That's for trucks that would be coming down Chestnut Ridge Drive, those would be existing trucks. None of the trucks for NESL would come out of the driveway and make a left, or come down Chestnut Ridge Drive and make the right in for that. So they would come to this stop sign, they would make this right, which is a very short distance, I believe it's about 300 feet as you can see there. Then they would make this left here. What we look at from an operation standpoint is the intersection delay. What would the overall delay be here during the worst hour? What would the overall delay be here during the worst hour? And what would the overall delay be at the next intersection in a worst hour?
Okay, so...
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No problem.
I just wanted to refocus on my question, which is, I'm seeing A's and a B in your truck. I can tell you, I can, I predict that I would grade this as a C or a D, being stuck behind these trucks every time that's... The probability of being stuck behind a truck when I got onto the road?
Right. If you pull out and you are the vehicle directly behind that truck, obviously, that's going to delay you. If we look at that one instantaneous vehicle, if we look at the vehicles over the course of an hour, there's the other 54 minutes that you could pull out, and you wouldn't be behind a truck, and you would go the same as you would today. There's trucks on the road today. There's cars on the road today. But if you get behind a truck, you're going to...
I'll finish off with this question. Did you do any study on the impact on a school bus that got hit from behind from one of these loaded trucks when the brakes failed?
No, I certainly can't speak to the probability of the trucks brakes failing and a school bus being directly in front of it and what that impact would be. I would say that would be very...
That road has a lot of school stops on Silver Spring Boulevard. The kids going to PVA. Did you do that study?
I don't know. Did they do that study?
Did you do that study?
I'm not sure what the question was. I'm sorry, go ahead. I was waiting for the gentleman at the...
What about the safety of the children that are getting on the school buses on Silver Springs Boulevard while these trucks are farrowing down there 45 miles an hour?
Sure. Well, every truck driver has to be a licensed truck driver, whether they drive for Nestle or they drive for somebody else, same as a car.
Was there a study done for that? Stop a bit of child getting on a bus and they don't realize going around the turn that that bus has stopped and the child's getting off?
Well, the truck would need to drive so that they see the school buses, as they would anywhere else in the world, and make sure that they drive safely and do not run into the school bus. Yes, sir?
Hi. I would like to continue my question that I asked earlier, since this is transportation. What is the grade on Chestnut Ridge?
Well, the grade on Chestnut Ridge certainly varies. At the top end of Chestnut Ridge, where we won't have any trucks, it's, I believe, 12%, but I would like to verify that.
Would you say 12% was rather steep?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, what is the weight limit on the bridge? Because that's a bridge they're crossing.
The bridge, just so I'm sure I'm correct, you're talking about the bridge on Chestnut Ridge?
At the bottom, by the stop sign.
That bridge is not posted, so in Pennsylvania, you can run vehicles up to 80,000 pounds over any unposted bridge.
And your water truck weighs how much?
Just under 80,000 pounds.
Just under 80,000?
That's full, I'm sorry, that's full.
That's full, which equates to over 36 tons. And you want to run it over that bridge? You want to break the road up?
Well, if it would break the road up or break the bridge up, PennDOT would post the bridge. They do inspections of the bridge.
... served by Schrausberg. In an ice storm or a snowstorm, is a truck that weighs more than likely 40 tons going to be able to stop at the stop sign?
Well, the trucks for Nestle will be coming out of here from a stop condition, and this area is relatively flat, which is why the bridge is here over the...
No, it's not flat. It's not flat at all.
It's relatively flat.
Your moment of inertia is so intense that the force of that truck coming down that hill in an ice storm and a snowstorm is going to kill somebody.
I would disagree that a truck pulling out from here would not be able to stop 300 feet away at stop sign.
Okay, fine. Would you stand in front of the truck for me, and I will try a test run?
I generally try not to stand in roadway. That's not something I do.
Are you ready to put your credentials on the line?
Sir, with all due respect, why would I stand in front of...
I'm telling you, this is a danger issue. An extreme danger issue.
Sir, there are trucks that use this roadway now. At this intersection...
Excuse me, I have lived around here 44 years. Monroe County DOT does not maintain that road as well as you'd like us to believe.
I didn't speak to how Monroe DOT maintains that road. Let me talk about another part of our study. We were asked to look at crash data. So we went back and we requested the last five-year accident history for those four intersections that I just mentioned, and they are in our traffic report.
But how is that relevant when you have a 40-ton truck?
Well, we're looking at what is at the intersection to see if we have existing operations. These roadways are open today. They have cars and trucks on them. And we want to see, are there any existing crash clusters that we should look at, and maybe there's a way to improve those situations? And we did not have any accidents reported in the five-year history of those four intersections. There were two single-vehicle accidents that hit a fixed object, not a truck, it was a car, along the roadway segments that we hit there.
Okay, so now you've created danger zone one. Danger zone two is going to be at the end of 209 Silver Springs Road. How is any truck going to make a left there? Please help me out here, maybe I'm stupid.
Sure. As we stand here today, trucks can go to that intersection and make a right or left turn out. It is a state intersection.
Nobody lets them make a left. That's a high-traffic area.
We looked at the site distance there, and you do have adequate site distance at that intersection.
I don't agree, and the people from Preskeville do not agree with what you're saying. Let me tell you. My name, I am Anid Vasquez. I live in Preskeville, and I can tell you that I went to the last meeting in the township, and the people from Preskeville are very concerned about your route. Because what you want to do is throw all these trucks through Palmeton, and as soon as that bridge is made in 209, your plan is to put everybody through Silver Spring Roads with all the buses and trying to make lefts in an intersection that doesn't have the space. And this is what the township supervisor said, and I heard. So I don't know how you did your traffic study. I'm a physician. I know, and I read, and I know how to analyze scientific data. Now, in that intersection, on a truck of that length, with that width, to make a left is going to be a major, major thing for safety. And all of you who are sitting there, who have grandchildren driving through our roads and know how many of our kids die in our roads, now you're going to tell me how this is going to affect this community? Are you from here, by the way? Do you drive in our roads all the time?
I do not drive on your roads all the time.
Oh, okay. So you're coming here and making a study on one day that you walk around and you drive around and you look a little, but you don't know how this community works? And that is my point. I'm talking for my patients, I'm talking for the people in this community. And now you want to start the trucks from 6:00 in the morning to 11:00 at night? Excuse me?
And again, I want to reiterate, and a lot of you make very, very good points, and by what you say here, they're not going to change their submittal. What you need to do is, we are hearing it, your board of supervisors hear it, and we have professionals that we have hired, that we've put in a place that are experts, just like the gentleman making the presentation, and that there is a concern, which I believe there is, which we all believe there is, that's the steps that we're going to take. And we've empowered a zoning hearing board to review this data and make recommendations.
This is a human thing. We're talking here about people, human beings, okay?
But what I'm saying is the impact of our conversations here today, we have entrusted the planning commission, the board of supervisors, as well as the people that we employ, our attorneys, our solicitors, as well as our engineers and hydrogeologists. And being from Polk Township, I would encourage you to speak to the people from Polk Township.
I have.
Well, then, they need to speak, they would have a right.
They will.
Then that's good. That's good. That's good.
Because this is going to affect everybody. Do you think we want all these trucks going through the center of Preskeville?
And what I think you should do, and you are, is address us.
Starting at 6:00 in the morning?
You need to address us.
Why don't you go 9 to 5?
I have a question. You referenced 80,000 pounds.
Yes.
The weight of the water is 54,145 pounds.
Right.
So the tractor and the trailer have to be approximately 25,000 pounds. The trailer would be approximately, if you get an ultralight trailer, probably around 11,000 pounds. So you're going to get a tractor to safely haul approximately 65,000 pounds, that a tractor of that low value is not geared up to haul that much weight.
Okay, I would have to...
Yeah. Hi, I'm Chuck Gallagher. I actually run logistics fleet, so the tankers are under my control. We do this every day right now. So we are running 6,500 gallons, and we are under 80,000 pounds from our other springs.
And what's the weight of your tractor?
You're about on. It's about 25,000.
So it's a single cab, guy can't even bring his lunch?
Oh, I'm sure he can bring a lunch, but it is a single, it's a day cab.
He probably can't carry more than 100 pounds worth of fuel.
Sir, there are over the weight limit of that bridge. And that's against the law in the Commonwealth of America.
Let's have a safe house.
It's against the law. There is a weight limit on that bridge.
And that's, which bridge are you talking about?
The bridge, if it's not referenced, the weight limit's 80,000. Is that right? If it's not referenced or signage, the weight limit's 80,000.
It doesn't mean that is the weight limit, it means you can't run over 80,000. It could handle bridges, certain bridges could handle a lot more than 80,000, but in Pennsylvania, if it is not posted, you are allowed to run 80,000 without a special hauling permit.
So you would feel comfortable for that tractor hauling this volume to Moscow?
Yeah. I do it every day.
It's overweight.
It's not overweight.
No, they have to be under the weight limit.
So you're telling me also that this tractor, there is a, they have to stop there because there's traffic, and then you have these 80,000 whatever standing in the middle of the bridge, waiting for all the traffic to clear?
Can I use the microphone?
Yeah, I guess we'll try it.
Next is the microphone.
Next is the microphone.
Glad I don't live in Conkleton.
My name's Ardis Sweetie. I live on Silver Spring Boulevard. By the way, I checked the site, it's where he's the owner of the site, check the location. That's why they go to Africa.
Yes, we had a scoping meeting with PennDOT, the township's engineer, and the township representatives, and we said, what are we going to study? What intersections are we going to look at? These were the intersections that we were tasked with looking at. That's correct.
So the majority of Silver Spring Boulevard, other than bridge weight, speed, has not been looked at.
Are you talking about site distance at like every other road or intersection along Silver Spring?
I'm suggesting a site distance of Carney Road, Molasses Valley Road, and Mountain View Road. Not so bad coming down, going down the site. I can imagine a truck's going down, and a school bus right there. And Silver Spring Boulevard utilizes Silver Spring Boulevard to get to, and takes Molasses Valley Road, it takes Carney Road, it takes Mountain View Road, back and forth. Has Nestle or you contacted the Pleasant Valley School System that these children are in? I mean, I know you're here in Eldred, but our buses and, and it's utilized by a lot of buses, not one or two, pretty much, there's probably 10 buses in the hours of 7:00 in the morning, actually quarter to 7:00, till 20 after 8:00 in the morning. And again, it's 3:00 in the afternoon until 4:15. And I don't want a bus on that road with your trucks coming down, loaded, between that area, because it's a straightaway. If they got to make up time, they got caught up here. And haulers haul. They're making money when they're hauling.
Well, I think we need to speak to that as well as far as speed and...
Right. So these are contracted, so them going faster will actually get them fired. So they, off of my schedule, they know how many they're going to pull a day, so they don't make money by going any faster.
Do they make money? Well, I saw one of your diagrams where it says it's estimated, or how long it's going to take them to get from the site to bottling. I'm not sure, but that was studied, and it was studied for the route of Silver Spring Boulevard. And if it wasn't totally sighted, you know, on where they're seeing or where they're not seeing, or that there's school buses, and you will have to, whether you like it or not, I mean, there's things we got to put up with, but you're going to have school buses. Go slow your time up, and I suggest you study it, because it's going to be a tragedy, and a big tragedy, because those buses stop. I've had five accidents in the five years, one fatality in my front door, coming down Silver Spring Boulevard, crossing just cruises, it's a straight line, they make up their time here, even the residents do. And there's one fatality. One was three weeks ago, Randy's in my load truck making a delivery. An elderly woman didn't expect them to be there. Three weeks ago, that intersection down there. And it's not the intersection, it just turns into a flat spot as soon as you come out. I think it needs to be studied, because it's a tragedy that'll happen.
Yeah, I have a question. 6:00 AM, I work late, and maybe, I live right on Silver Spring, but I actually don't get back from work until about 5:00 or 6:00. So, I mean, maybe I'm being a little selfish, but 6:00 AM seems absurdly early in the morning to be running truckers. I know this is a family community. Most of us have kids and such, and there's school bus drivers and there's stuff, and I just, like I said, that's probably when I'm coming home, so I know I'm not going to be, I moved away from the city to get away from this crap, and you guys are bringing it right back in our backyard, so I just, I would like to know why.
Go somewhere else.
Yeah, please go somewhere else, please. But I'd like, my question is, 6:00 AM is insanely early in the morning. Why, I mean, that's crazy.
When we looked at the hours of operation, I'm talking to a microphone, it's back there.
It's not funny. This isn't funny, guys. It's not a joke. It's not a joke.
Okay, when I looked at the, when we looked at the hours of operation, we looked at the zoning for when they would be prohibited from running, and that's what we base the hours of operation on, it's based on the councils.
Can I ask you a question? If there was trucks running through your town with children at 6:00 AM in the morning, would you want these trucks running through your town at 6:00 AM in the morning, right next door to your house? My house shakes when a truck goes by. It shakes. I can't sleep when a truck goes by, and it sucks. I used to come here as a kid, there's been whatever, but I'm just telling you, my house shakes. So when your trucks pass by and I'm coming back to go to bed, my house is going to shake, which means I'm probably not going to get good sleep. So I just want you to know from personal experience.
I have a question.
Any more traffic or...
Yes. What regards this, the longer I stand, the more questions. I might want to... I'm Dr. Baker. I'm a semi-retired physician, over 45 years. Anyway, having been in the Navy, it reminds me of something the Navy kind of passed on to other disciplines, like practice of medicine, hospital practice, same thing. It's called root cause analysis. You see, if somebody gets killed or there's a major accident, well, that's not going to tell us anything, the damage happened. If there's safe practices going on, that's great. Now, in, on a carrier, on a US Navy carrier, not like a Chinese carrier, they want to know what the near misses are. I don't know if you folks ever heard of root cause analysis? If you have, please, raise your hands. No, no, I want these gentlemen, the experts. Root cause analysis. Have you taken that into consideration about things like the traffic, things like the operation that we're not going to see? And another thing is, are, there are roadways in Pennsylvania that are considered closed to commercial traffic. I wonder, have you done a comparison with those roads with this? I'm just curious. Have you? Raise your hand. Okay, you haven't. Sorry about that.
Just to clarify, I'm not the traffic engineer, so I expect the traffic engineer, if that's an appropriate...
I'm starting to think of this microphone, I want to hear you.
Dr. Baker, I'm just saying, I have heard, I answered your question. I have heard...
Dr. Baker, I'm just saying, I have heard, I answered your question. I have heard root cause analysis. I do not perform root cause analysis. If it's an appropriate study to be done by our traffic engineer, then I would encourage him to complete that study as well.
What about the engineer, traffic engineer? I'm sorry.
I am the traffic engineer.
I'm just saying. What about the traffic engineer?
I am the traffic engineer.
Oh, you're...
That's what I was, yeah.
Have we made any comparisons with other traffic, truck routes? Are we now a commercial truck route? Are we supposed to have traffic cameras, et cetera, to see what's going on in our intersection?
Do you mean like ITS cameras that you see, like Pantel Zoom cameras that Pendott deploys in certain highways? Is that what you're...
Like the ones that gives a tick if you go too fast or go through a red light, et cetera?
Oh, uh, speed, speed cameras. No. There's no speed cameras that I'm aware of out here. There's no ITS cameras that are out here.
No.
We did look at the roadways to make sure that these roadways were permitted to have trucks on them. We met with Pendott, who owns and maintains the roadways, and they acknowledged as long as we are within the length and weight requirements, trucks can run either from Nestle or any other business on these roadways.
Maybe age imparts a certain amount of caution as we go on as you like, but I hope these guys have the same concerns as I have when I'm driving my pickup down these curves and around these curves. It's a concern. I won't ask too more about that. Now, with root cause analysis, I would like to know how much you have employed as far as this situation with us. We're concerned. Now, that being said, you folks presented your side of the issue and what you're going to, I'll use this term loosely, offer us, okay? But you started back in 2012. We didn't know about it. We should have, we had, we'd have had more time to prepare certain requests of our, in a presentation to Nestle. That's fair. You want something from us? We want something from you. This is a little village. There are a lot of improvements, public improvements, municipal concerns like municipal water supply for us, improve our schools, our roads, our sidewalks, et cetera. You know, we want to look a little bit like some other towns that have been improved. We want to look a little bit like a tourist attraction. Right now, we're rural, that's what we sell. We have the greatest water in the world, right here. You want it. What are we going to get in return? We need to make a deal with you and I want to know specifically from our planning board, when we will get a venue before or after the zoning hearing to present our demands, so we can negotiate.
As I said, our current zoning ordinance classifies water extraction in the manufacturing light district. I'm sure there'll be discussions whether that's right or wrong in a few minutes.
Yeah.
That's the way we're set up and it's known as a special exception that gets heard by the zoning hearing board. And in order to change that, you'd have to make application or make your request to the board of supervisors and then they would decide whether to change the zoning in accordance with what you want.
Well, let's say it goes through, okay? They're getting something. What are we going to get? What are we going to be able to present our case for these improvements in our community? Now, you should expect of somebody who's going to get something valuable from us.
The immediate answer would be, under our current policies, is to, to be recognized as, in fact, maybe, Michael could hear that, I'm depressed. But anyway, to be recognized by the zoning hearing board as a person withstanding. And then you present whatever your plan is, and if your plan is elaborate enough to entail this type of presentation, you would certainly be welcome, as long as the zoning hearing board would recognize you, you'd be welcome to give this elaborate of a presentation.
I see. I have another question. Maybe two.
Any more traffic questions? Let's get rid of the traffic and then we'll go.
Yes, I think so. Are you aware, I know you're not a physician, but are you aware of studies done that suggest that truck exhaust increases asthma?
As a traffic engineer, no.
You're not aware of any that exist or...
I have not done, I'm not an expert in that field, no.
Is there one?
I am and I can tell you, if they idle their trucks, a lot of that assume, yes, it can affect people with them.
It came to mind. Who deals with policy here among the Nestle people? Can anybody speak to policy, just general policy?
I may be able to.
All right.
I don't agree with the policy.
I heard the gentleman say, the hydrologist, that you won't pump in times of drought. Did I hear you correctly?
I believe I indicated that during times of drought, there'd be permit conditions that may disallow them from pumping.
Okay, now...
May.
Yeah, okay.
Pumping California, there's drought there.
This ties into the question of Nestle policy. Are you aware, now I've seen this online, the quotation by the CEO in California, his name is Tim Brown, I can't be absolutely sure. He was put to the question, the question was put to him, we've got drought here in California. This was sometime in the recent past. Are you going to stop drilling? His answer was, no, we're going to increase. Now, why are we, I don't want to make any squirrels, but why are we to trust what you're saying if Nestle behind this policy? The next thing I want to know from the hydrologist...
Can I focus on that question?
Is, okay.
You asked a question I'd like to answer. I'm not aware of any active exploration activity in California related to our business. That's what you mentioned. We are withdrawing water from spring sites in California as well as from municipal systems to, for our products. Yes, there is a drought in California of monumental proportions.
Okay.
Absolutely. We, like many other businesses in California, rely on water sources for our business.
Money.
Why does Nestle need to draw water anywhere?
People buy our products.
Why don't you go home?
People buy our products. There's a demand for our products. We are a business like many others. Ours does, you know, for example, the beverage category, there's many types of beverages out there. Bottle water is one, there's sodas, teas, they all have the base ingredient of water.
It's not working.
So, in a drought situation in California, we continue to operate our spring sites in a sustainable manner. We are not causing impacts to any, anybody's supply of water in California.
Do you allow any independent inspectors from the communities to observe you at any time? No, we trust, but verify.
Absolutely. The regulatory agencies have every right to inspect our facilities at any given moment.
What about people from the communities?
Just any, anybody come onto the property? We can't allow that obviously for security reasons.
I understand, security reasons, yes. But you know, what if we want to use one of our own independent inspectors withstanding our qualifications?
If it's a township hydrogeologist? Sure.
Okay. I have one more question. As far as this drilling that you're going to be doing, the depth was, I think, listed as down to 100. How deep is that, the deepest well going to be?
I'm going to turn that question to Lou because I don't recall the details as well as Lou does. The wells drilled to the same were approximately 200 feet deep.
200 feet?
Yes.
Okay. I asked another geologist, how deep one of these commercial wells should be, and he said, it's expected that commercial drilling should go down from 500 feet to 1,000 feet. Do you take exceptions to that?
I take big exceptions. In eastern Pennsylvania, aquifers and their aquifer thicknesses, and there's a report by Low at Al that talks about aquifer thicknesses in Pennsylvania. And most of the water is, that is potable is in the first several hundred feet, 300 feet, 400 feet. And that is usually the target zones for aquifers and fractured rock in eastern Pennsylvania. Now with that, it's also depending on the site geology. I mean, if the sandstone that we're looking at is at 400 feet, we perhaps may drill to 400 feet. The sandstone was a depth of 200 feet and that was where the aquifer was and that's where the wells are drilled into.
Well, with the advances in technology, do you gentlemen in that field ever update your information? Or do you rely on things that are, information that's 30 and 40 and 20 years old?
We...
In medicine, we're always updating things and finding that there are newer things we didn't think of before.
Yes. Yes, we update and we use newer methods all the time.
Well, most of these people here, including myself, probably have a shallow well. You're going to be drilling in this shallow aquifer, basically, in the mic.
The, what our studies have shown except is that the aquifer is mainly on the site. There was some impact to well water levels to the west and to the north and south. There weren't, they were in different aquifers.
One more consideration I was asked was which aquifer precisely, and I know it said the Palmerton, something about the Palmerton aquifer or something like that.
It's a Palmerton sandstone.
And that connectivity, have you done any studies? Are you able to do any studies about connections between this aquifer and let's say, oh, are they over right?
Yes, in fact, that's, in the presentation, we showed monitoring wells that showed no connection to the north and to the south.
You're sure about that?
When we do the test, we monitor water levels while pulling out the extraction water. And those wells to the north by the Buckwack Creek showed no drawdown. Wells to the south showed no drawdown.
Now, take your word for it.
Yes, but you're basing that, what you're saying, excuse me.
Hi.
What size tankers do you use?
The tankers for transport?
Yes.
6,500 gallon tankers.
What, how much water would the tanker hold?
The tanker holds 6,500 gallons.
I worked for a water hauling company for years and we always ran 6,000 gallons, put us right at the 80,000 limit.
Okay.
So where's the 6,500 coming from?
The tanker's 6,500. And the tractors, what we were talking about earlier, are single cab, day cabs. So that keeps us under the 80,000.
So none of your tankers are 8,000 gallon tankers though?
None of the tankers that'll run here.
Are, do you use subcontractors or are the employees up Nestle?
No, I use three PLS.
What?
I have three dedicated third-party logistics companies that haul for me.
If they get caught running overweight, who pays the fine?
They pay it and then it comes to us, but they don't run overweight.
What, how is it monitored when they're loading? Or you're saying that they only haul, the tanker is a 6,500 gallon tanker?
Yeah, the tanker is a 6,500 gallon tanker. We load it full. If you're in the business, you know the safest way to travel is completely full.
Yes.
Who weighs it?
It's off the pump.
Who?
It comes off the pump at 6,500 gallons.
So you guys don't go into any station to get weigh ounces?
No.
Maybe I can address that question on weighing. We don't weigh it each time that we load it. We load the truck, we take it to a weigh station, we know what that truck and tanker combination is and we ensure that it's less than 8,000 pounds.
Are you taking questions from other stuff too?
I'm only answering traffic.
Yeah, I know you're traffic.
If there's other...
Okay, Artis has a traffic.
I have a traffic. When you did your traffic study?
Yes.
What time of year was that?
We did the data collection after our scoping meeting with Pendott. It was in November.
It was in November.
November 12th and 14th were the two days we counted the intersection turning movements and then that week we counted 24 hours a day for seven days a week. And that data's in the, in the report.
In those side areas? Nowhere else along Silver Spring Boulevard except in those side areas?
No, and that's why we have the scoping meeting with Pendott and the township to determine exactly what we feel we should study based on what Pendott's going to require for their roads and the township's engineer is going to require.
Okay, and when Pendott, they approved this, this was based on your length of your truck?
The study was approved based on the meeting that we had as far as the length of the trucks and the weight of the trucks. That's regulated for any trucker.
Oh, that's right.
Correct.
For any truck on the state side?
Yes, if Nestle or any other operator wanted to run a vehicle over 80,000 pounds, which they do, that's an overweight vehicle, you need a special hauling permit for that. But we're not proposing any of that.
Okay. And a question, it's icy in the weather. How, how do your trucks run on that? What determines that weather, the way you're pulling down? Okay, let's say this is...
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
How does weather affect transportation?
Operation.
Yeah, that's my world. We'll shut it down. So what we'll do is we'll get our silos at our factories, load it, and we'll run Nestle Pure Life for a couple of days while we can get a fill of spring water. Because you know a storm's coming. Like I'll give you the 30 inch storm we just had. A couple of days prior to that, I just get the silos at my site down in Allentown full and then I'll shut my trucks down until the roads are clear again.
Okay, so then, till the roads are clear and they can get here and pump water?
Yep. And if, if for some reason, either your township or your state or somebody decides not to plow and salt your roads, then I won't come until it's safe for my guys to operate.
And someone out of Nestle's at the, the bottling plant or Nestle's, who, because you're not going to be in Conkle Town watching the weather. Is there someone at dispatch somewhere saying Silver Spring Boulevard has not been plowed yet? Don't go there?
Yeah, the dispatcher and the driver will make that decision. So if the driver gets on a situation where it's not safe, his instructions are to shut down until it's safe. So we'll, we'll leave a truck instead of trying to keep plowing through. It's not safe and it's not intelligent.
Excuse me for one question.
Traffic question?
A traffic question.
I have a traffic question. In your, in your, in your data research, you refer to ADT or volume of traffic?
Yes.
Have you ever been asked to do a survey strictly for truck traffic?
Yes, one of the things we did in our count is we do classification counts. So the counts are broken up by vehicle class of motorcycle, car, truck and so on. And that's in the report. Yeah, the hard data's in. Yeah. And Pendott also reports on what percentage of the ADT is truck traffic based on their own counts that they do.
I have a question. I hired on the resident. You studied Silver Spring Boulevard. I wondered if you studied where the intersection of Borger Road and Green Tweak Road is across Silver Spring Road?
We did not, no.
I use that a lot. And when I'm heading west and I come to that South Street, that Silver Spring Road, when I look to the left, there's a curve. When I look to the right, there's a hill. You can't see more than 50, 60 feet either way. I'm not going to use that intersection no more if them trucks are going up and down that road. And if I feel like this about one of your studies, what about all them other studies? Is there little loopholes like this that I might not know until later? And then it's too late because I know how Nestle is one to get in there, you can get them out.
I'm not sure what the loophole...
I mean, I know.
Go ahead.
All right, it's a state road, it's legal, you can use it. But I just wonder if you studied that one intersection? That's just one of them. I know you're not even around here, you don't understand the roads.
Well, we have a meeting with Pendott and the township's engineer to determine what we study. That's why we have a scoping meeting and that's how we determine what intersections to study.
It sounds like you don't care.
No, it's not that I don't care. That's why we had the meeting so that we can hear from professionals from the township on what we should look at. And that's what we did.
Excuse me, you're not getting called township involved.
I feel like somebody's pissing on my back telling me it's raining.
They would like to know what your name is, sir.
Guy Hyde.
I have a question.
One, one thing to add on to him, this intersection he's talking about need to be studied. Green Tweak and Borger were somewhere you cannot see, you cannot see. Now, this gentleman just, I think that, this gentleman just said he's not going to use that intersection. So guess where all the people are going to go? In the Kingswood Lake, which is a private community. We have a problem now with people coming through because they don't want to use that intersection. We have a problem now with people coming through because they don't want to use that intersection. So many accidents that come through our association. So there's a major problem right there.
Excuse me. Sir!
With regard to this last gentleman.
Why don't we listen to some other people in regards to, we can open this up now, general questions?
With regard to this gentleman and the traffic impact study. Tell me why, of course, you gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, are you going to rely on your observations at whatever time you get there? Or whatever you think the team could be in these conditions wrote. But what about the experiences of all of these ladies and gentlemen who use these roads every day? Are you going to give them 90% as well you should of, of weight in your consideration? You should. Think about that. I'd like an answer from someone about the traffic from that point of view.
I have a question.
I'm waiting for an answer.
From Epsilon Associates. And I'm going to try to make some quick remarks here. I know it's getting late. I'm the sound guy. So we did a, just real quickly, I'm a board certified noise control engineer, work for Epsilon Associates. We were retained by Nestle to do a sound level impact study. That's contained in the EIS the town has exhibit F, F as in Frank. So a sound level study consists really of four, four different parts. Part one is to measure the existing sound levels in the community today, find out what they are. Step two, go to a comparable water extraction facility or whatever the source being proposed is. In this case, a water extraction facility. Understand what the sound levels are, they are what generates sound, measure that there. Step three is to bring that information back to the community of interest, Eldred Township in this case. And model that out here. And number four is take that information compared to what your township regulations are, what are the sound level limits here in town? As well as compare it to the existing sound levels for informational purposes. So the first step was to, to measure sound levels here in town. The map up here again, it's, the site is here on the right-hand side of Chestnut Ridge. This is Kunkel Town Road going across the top of the figure. We measured at three different locations in town. One here along Chestnut Ridge representing the houses closest to the site to the south. We also measured right up here outside the fire station to represent homes along Kunkel Town Road. And we also measured a third location over here near the property line of the site to represent what might be the backyards of some of those homes up along Kunkel Town Road. We, we measured out here for about two weeks in November of 2015. Collected about over 300 hours of sound levels continuously 24 hours a day at those three locations. Sound levels, as you might expect, vary over the course of the day and the night. They, they were generally in the 40s to the 60s hour by hour. With many, many short-term spikes, if you will, for brief periods of time when cars and trucks would go up and down the roads. And those type of sound levels would typically be between 60, 70, up to 80 decibels whenever a vehicle goes by. Second step was to go up to an existing water extraction facility that, that Nestle has. There's one over Lehigh County called Hoffman Springs. So we went to that facility, measured sound levels up there for a day and understood what, what generates the sound levels. And in terms of steady sound levels at a site like this, there really isn't any. They have, they have the ground level water extraction pumps. They're electrically powered, they're very quiet. They're installed inside of a good, well-built building, so there's really no sound from those at all. There is a little bit of sound from the trucks arriving and departing. The, the third step was to take that information, bring it back here to, to Eldred Township. Make sure I hit the right button here. So this, this figure is very similar to the one I just showed you, only it overlays some of our modeling locations. And you can, you can, you can see from this the, the site loop in here. The actual pumping and loading facility is right over here. Again, that does, does not make any sound. What we measured over in Hoffman Springs was silent. It, it, there's no sound from it. Using that information, we modeled at the nearest homes to the north, nearest property lines as well as the nearest homes to the south along Chestnut Ridge. There's a lot of information in the report, a lot of numbers. I'll just try to summarize quickly at a high level. The township regulations are easily met by any of the pumping operations because they're silent. Truck activities or actually any vehicle operations in the town of Eldred are excluded from the township regulations. Township regulations do not look at sound from any vehicles, any motor vehicle, period. However, we knew people might be interested in it, so we looked at it anyway. Whether it was the trucks driving in the driveways, parking, starting up, leaving the site. And again, those sound levels are similar to or less than sound levels that are measured out there on the roads today. So I'll, I'll try to wrap up here. In summary, the, the sound levels, sound levels for this type of operation really are not an issue. There's, there's no overnight truck filling from 11:00 to 6:00 a.m. There's no activity, period. Trucks are not allowed to idle per state rule and company policy. The wells and the pumps are underground, they're electrically driven. And finally, there's going to be a well-constructed building housing, housing all that activity. So the, the project will easily meet the township noise regulations. That I will stop.
Thank you. My question, Lori Zilmer. My question to you is with the studies that you have done. And I, I have to ask why you picked the month of November? Because if any of you all were here in the month of November, it can't get any slower. Okay? That's why you did it? Is that why you did it? Because it's calm? Why didn't you do it in the summertime? Kids are not at school, they are at home. You've got traffic. You, the buses, they're, they're not running when you probably did the study. So you've got a ton of cars with the kids. You've got probably more moms at home, moms and dads at home, the more cars. Oh, and the bicyclists. Let's talk about the bicyclists. I mean, this is a place where there's a ton of bicyclers around here. So why did you not do the study or why didn't you not do more than one study? Why didn't you do a quarterly study? Why didn't you do one in midsummer?
Talking about noise or traffic?
All of it, the two studies. Because it's quiet here. It's quiet and the, and the traffic is not that much here in the month of November. Come around summertime. It's a different, it's a different, it's a different place here in the summertime.
Well, yeah, for the traffic, we did it following our scoping meeting that we had with Pendot, which happened to fall into November. But we also do look at historical data. Pendot counts their roads. So they have data that's available online on their Pendot ITMS data webpage where they count traffic volumes and they adjust for seasonal variations such as that. From our standpoint, the volumes of traffic on these roadways are extremely low. We don't generally see levels of service As at intersections, especially at a stop condition. Generally, you're going to wait more than 10 seconds at a stop sign. So even if we adjusted for the volumes and even if we honestly doubled the volumes, which wouldn't be realistic, it would be.
You can say that maybe here, but not on Silver Spring Road.
Silver Spring at 209?
Yeah, that's going to be a whole different.
Yeah, that was not one of the intersections that we studied.
There's no way your truck will be able to turn on 209. You are not involving the whole township. That belongs to whole township.
Can I answer your question from a sound perspective?
Okay.
So, so the numbers that we, that we calculate and model are, are independent of the time of the season. In other words, what we estimate from the operation of the, of the, of the facility don't matter what time of year it is. The, the background measures we took in November are really for informational purposes to understand how loud it is. And if, if what you're, I understand what you're saying, then if there's actually more traffic during the summer.
Correct.
Then, then the existing condition sound levels without the facility would, would be, would be somewhat higher.
Correct. But you don't know that because you didn't do the study?
No.
What he's saying is if they did it during a peak time of noise, that would be worse for Eldred Township because the, the, the average noise would be higher.
And it wouldn't affect them.
And it wouldn't affect them as much. Where if you were in a quiet time, really the only noise there is.
Right, it's kind of a conservative analysis in that sense.
Okay. All right, that being said, let's go back to the study on traffic. How could that possibly be? I know that that is one of the worst intersections of trying to get out on 209. And they're not a study. I'm in a car.
I guess we're going to get traffic lights once.
How is that possible that you guys could not, did not do a study?
We had a meeting with Pendot for their roads.
Pendot doesn't know.
On what we need to study. They, they certainly do know their roads.
No, they don't.
No, they don't.
And we determined what intersections to study. Based on this development, a study would not even be required by Pendot. They have criteria of volumes of traffic that you add to their roadways. There's roadways on a, or there's traffic on every roadway. If we add a certain number of vehicles, they say that will be enough of an impact, you have to study that impact. We're below those thresholds and that's a state law.
You don't, you don't, you don't drive.
They're not from here. They don't care about us. They don't care about us. They're not from here.
These people don't live around here.
Exactly.
There are huge vacation complexes up 534. The traffic increases five times in the summertime as opposed to the wintertime. And you cannot make a left at that stop sign. Now, am I wrong?
And again, what you need to do, familiar with that area, West End Physical Therapy. West End Physical Therapy, they may be a objector that would be heard at the zoning hearing board.
Look, his trucks aren't going to be able to leave Kunkel Town. That's what I'm saying. It's going to impact your business, your dollar efficiency also. You cannot make a left in the summertime at that stop sign. It's time you face the truth.
I got a question with the sound.
Yes, sir.
All right. You said that you did studies for a sound test. I thought that our supervisors voted on you guys not putting your sound meters up. You guys, Eric Andrews said that he wanted to put one up at the firehouse, one up at the community center and they voted not that, no, you couldn't put them up. So how did you get readings if you weren't allowed to put meters up?
Well, you're correct. We were not allowed to put one up at the community center, so we did not. Two of the three are on the leased property for the project, so that was, that was obviously not, not an issue.
Of course, it's not going to bother him. He's getting money. Why would it bother him?
And one was at the fire station and, and we were allowed to put one there.
Well, they voted that you weren't allowed to put it here. So where, where did that vote come from?
Good question, Doug. The township wants.
The township did not allow us to put a sound level meter at the community center.
Well, you, I was there that night.
I asked, I asked for permission from the fire company to put a sound level meter here and they allowed me.
Well, is that before or after you bought the defibrillators for the fire company?
Doug, there has been no defibrillators bought for the Kunkel Town Fire Company.
The fire company is telling you it came from you guys, so.
I encourage you to ask the fire company if we purchased them any defibrillators.
Oh, sorry, Solomon isn't here tonight again.
I'm sorry, Doug.
Solomon isn't here again tonight, so.
I spoke to Solomon earlier this week and asked him the same question. Did somebody donate three defibrillators to the fire company? He said absolutely not.
He's the one who spouted off that they came from you guys. It came from his mouth like that. Then I have one other question about your, with your hydraulics guy. I sat here a whole night listening to this and seeing your pictures that I think I remember that, that first picture in like third grade or something like that. The recharging, what they're about to recharge with 50, 50 inches a year or something like that? I asked this once before and I didn't get no answer. So when you figure for your recharging at 50 inches a year and what you guys are extracting, you guys are extracting more than what the recharging rate is. How, how does that work? So yeah, you only want a 20-year contract because in 20 years it's going to be dried up.
I disagree with that. We've been through the presentation, the permitting levels are. The water that is extractable is sustainable. We cannot pull more water than is recharged.
You know, how do you get your numbers? Because how my calculator heads up, I mean, you're, you're adding numbers for the whole Eldred Township. You're not pulling more from all of Eldred Township. You're pulling from 80 acres. So, so when you do your recharging rate for your 80 acres, you know, because that's what you have leased, the numbers don't add up.
We, we discussed that already, the recharge and the water rights use. The recharge is based upon the extent of the aquifer and we have that in there. We have how much rains and how much of that rainfall recharges into the aquifer. It ultimately comes out and, and the stream is the base flow measurements where we have the stream gauges and it's based upon that. So the recharge isn't a guess, it's basically a, it's a, it's a gauged number based at the stream. So that is what they will regulate it on and then we take that number again, which we did, we did the testing in a dry time. They will then, we then projected it into a drought time.
You never saw a dry time in our town. I'm sorry, sir.
I've been, I've been doing this for 30 years. I've seen some pretty dry periods.
I lived here for 47 years, so I did see some dry times.
And, and the drought, it will be conditions in the permit. If there is, when we go through the permit, the permitting is based upon drought conditions. So some of the conditions that you talk about that, that there had, they would be, have restrictions on the pulling of the water. If you had extreme conditions where the Buckwaw Creek was not running, there would be very highly unlikely that Nestle would be pulling water from the site. There's going to be pass-by requirements on the flow. It's going to be based upon the recharge. We've already based the recharge on drought numbers and those drought numbers also have drought mitigations above them. So if those droughts occur, which are highly unlikely for that to affect, because we're already permitting the levels based upon drought levels.
Mr. Turiaf, while you're up, I do have a question for the sound gentleman. I'm sorry, this is your, no, right now, Mr. Turiaf, while you're up. At last month's meeting, my mission meeting, I asked you, or I intended to ask you, when EarthRes was first involved on this site? And, and your response was that it was about, I believe it was about May of 2015. Mr. Anderson said there was some water quality and flow testing going on prior to that time. I may not have asked the right question or gotten the right answer because in the, in the notes, it looks like EarthRes was involved in about 2012. There was a woman writing some letters from EarthRes. And my question is, now that I understand EarthRes has had a relationship with Nestle going back, you know, almost 20 years, would you have been, had a new contract in 2012 when that woman wrote that letter? Or as your ongoing relationship, could they have just, Nestle just had asked her to write that letter?
You have many, many questions there. So let me, because the other meeting, I believe, when we talked about May 2015, that was the time that we began the drilling at the site. I think we were talking about the drilling of the wells at that time. So in May 2015 is when the intrusive investigation of the well drilling occurred. We have been involved in the site certainly since 2012 in collecting the monitoring.
And my other question that related to that is, would that have then have been a, a new contract for EarthRes? Or would what was done in 2012 just been since you have an ongoing relationship, it just gets billed to, you know, whatever?
A lot of the work with Nestle, we, we provide proposals and we, we look, they look at competitive bids between companies. So we have ongoing proposals that.
It would have been a new contract, essentially.
I don't, I guess I don't understand the question.
That work, that work was done in 2012. It's not like you, they just would have called them up and said, bill this, do this work, bill it. My understanding from you, you just said there would be a bidding process.
I'm not sure if everything is bidded, but we do write proposals for the work that has to be done and they get approved and then we do the work.
Thank you. And then for the sound gentleman. I, I saw your, your test points. I was actually unaware that you were refused to test discern points. But I have questions related to. But I have questions related to a gentleman in the room that asked a question or expressed some concerns. In January, you know, if I were living along one of the roads, these trucks were passing by, passing by at nine, ten, eleven o'clock at night, even if it was fifty-five dB or sixty-five dB, DVA, that would bother me. And I know that decimal levels are not regulated with vehicles by the state, by our ordinance, but since this is a special exception, restrictions can be placed on the applicant for operating hours based on things like people being annoyed by trucks. And this is actually turning into a comment rather than a question. And I didn't intend that, and I apologize. I'll make that quick comment and sit down, and that is suggesting to the planners that they restrict truck traffic after nine o'clock and maybe on Sundays. In my town, we had an operation that ran from morning till night, and I can tell you, I lived a half mile away, and I would look at that clock, and they ended at ten every night, and it was a blessing when they shut down, and one day a week off was barely enough to recover. And I would just make that suggestion to the planners to try to restrict the truck traffic somewhat. Thank you.
We did have a special section on Tuesday night, and that was part of the, as planners, we had a, we called a work session, kind of like a workshop, and part of that discussion, part of the minutes will reflect that we're recommending to the zoning hearing board that the times be less and, I believe, no traffic on Sunday.
Or Saturday. The weekend off.
Hi, I was wondering, does your company do sound studies related to livestock?
Livestock, what do you mean? I'm not sure what you mean.
Animals.
I understand what livestock are.
Okay, well, I can introduce myself if you'd like. My name is Megan LeBlond, I own a twenty-acre farm that I attempt to run sustainably. I raise Coturnix quail. Coturnix quail are affected by sound. They don't lay when there are high sound levels. Your company does not provide any studies related to sound levels in livestock?
We have not studied that, no.
Okay.
Even though it's a farming community here?
I've been to thirty meetings about this, I have spent, I've probably placed thirty phone calls, and it breaks my heart that we're here today dealing with this issue, because there's no reason why we can't see through this. And the fact that pockets are being lined while you export our precious life-giving resource is unreal to me. I don't...I don't understand how you can participate with this kind of an action. To me, it's a raping of the earth for personal, private profit, and it breaks my heart to see each and every one of you up here doing this to your communities, to the earth, it breaks my heart. The Coturnix quail, which will be affected by sound, it's not me, because I'm not on Silver Springs, but if anybody wanted to raise Coturnix quail, which is one of the most sustainable animals that there is, the egg can incubate in seventeen days, and it can start laying within five to six weeks, which a chicken can start laying in six months to a year. So it's actually referenced in the Bible that the quail was put on the earth to sustain man. And if the quail can't lay, how could it possibly sustain us in that amount of time? There are incredible health benefits to the quail egg, and I'm concerned about how you're infringing on any one of my fellow man's abilities to be able to raise that quail. I'm concerned about that. If your sound expert can help me a little bit, we're all happy.
By the way, an expert has documentation that trucks, the water trucks in the fracking area, killed the lady's alpacas, they all died from the stress, and it's documented, and it's an expert I'm trying to get here. It is documented, first of all, her foundation came off, honest to God, this is true, her foundation came off from so many of the water trucks going by with the fracking, and all of her alpacas died. Every one of them had like heart attacks, they just couldn't take the constantness, that's not what I'm up here for, but it reminds me of that, the constant, continuous truck traffic, the animals could not endure it. That is documented, and I have an expert that can bring that case here. That's the truth, anyway, so.
I have one question for the sound. I guess it's not so much sound, but when trucks drive by, the sound does bother me immensely. I have a very sensitive, I'm a musician, I don't know what your background is, but it's not so much the sound as the vibration. My house shakes, and I've had, I've had actually artwork fall off my walls, there's been damage done because my house shakes. If you know about, if you've lived in this community and you know about the housing, some of it, like the place I live is, you know, it's a cabin, let's be honest. Have there been any studies about the vibrational movement of trucks versus the sound? Because the sound doesn't bother me as much as my windows shaking and stuff of that nature.
I mean, vibration is certainly a location-specific type phenomena, it's gonna depend how close you are. In this case, it's roadway, groundboard-induced vibration that could be possible from any truck driving by, whether it's a nested truck or anything else.
Was there any studies done on this?
No.
Okay, just checking.
I don't know who to ask this question to. One last thing, on Fresh Air a couple weeks ago, a man who has an office in Penarjul was on Fresh Air, and he was saying that when those trucks go by, they shake, his office, his whole entire office shakes, that is horrible, and it goes on, he's from Allentown, but he works there, and it goes on all day long. So this is definitely a known fact about trucks, but that's not my question. I don't know who I'm supposed to...
Just reading, just reading.
Okay. In your application, it's clear that Nestle was evaluating and performing tests on the Gower property in 2012. Was Nestle aware that at this time, water extraction was not a permitted use? Yes or no? Yes or no?
It's not a simple yes or no answer.
You gotta answer it.
I won't be glad to give you the answer, though.
No, it has to be yes or no?
No, it does not.
Yes, it does. I want it to be yes.
When we began monitoring...
That's a question you knew you didn't know. You knew what you didn't know.
Answer the question.
We...
Answer the question.
I am trying to.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. When we began monitoring the springs, we absolutely reviewed the Eldred Township zoning ordinance.
What year?
2012-ish.
Twelve-ish, the whole year? You don't have a date?
I don't have an exact date for it, I apologize.
Not, you don't even know the, do you know the year?
We did, we did review the zoning ordinance. We did recognize that water extraction was defined as manufacturing. We also read, further read the zoning ordinance and noticed that manufacturing light is a permitted use in the commercial zoning district. However, the zoning ordinance does not define manufacturing light. We felt manufacturing light is a subset of manufacturing, and logic will tell you that manufacturing light would be a light manufacturing-type business. Water extraction does not involve any manufacturing processes. So our interpretation of the zoning ordinance at that time was that water extraction could be considered manufacturing light and therefore allowed in the commercial zoning district. And as a result of that interpretation, we continued monitoring the springs.
But it wasn't allowed at the time. No matter what you, no matter what you say, it was not allowed at the time.
I'm explaining, I'm explaining...
I told you, did some supervisor here in this room tell you that they would help you and they would work on it and they...
Absolutely not.
Well, then why would you continue to spend money?
Because I just explained, we felt that water extraction could be considered manufacturing light and therefore allowed. Excuse me?
So they went and changed the ordinance without ever talking to Nestle. So Ricky Gower, Sharon, and whoever else was involved, they never got together before you changed the ordinance and said, "Hey, don't worry, we're gonna change ordinance for you," and you just go on, keep on working. So you just kept on working without ever talking to a supervisor or anybody, and never finding out how the community felt. I go door-to-door in this community.
Really?
I go door-to-door in this community, ninety-eight percent of the people are against it. Megan, Joyce, and I have spent forty to fifty hours of our life going door-to-door in this community. Two percent of the people who are for it, I don't know, they're either related to Ricky Gower or Sharon or somebody, but most of the people in this community are dead-set against it. Why didn't you find that out before you extracted, decided to extract your waters? Why didn't you find out how the community felt? Because we are all against it, ninety-eight percent. I will go to my grave knowing that.
Desiree, I appreciate your passion.
This might put me in my grave earlier, actually. It probably will.
I hope not. I appreciate your passion, Desiree.
No, this is not passion, this is fact.
I want you to know, when we began monitoring various spring sites, we monitor a lot of spring sites, most of them are determined not to be feasible for development. So we continued monitoring the spring, knowing that there's a very good chance that it would not move on to the next stage. So typically in those situations, we do not go and start talking with the community because it's most likely it's not going to move to a permitting phase.
But why...
That's why we did not start having those conversations in 2012.
Why do supervisors do it? When you read the zoning enough to see if you could do it, and you explained, what, did you get clarification, though? That yes, we can, or no, we can, or it's just, you even said, "Well, it sort of sounds like we can."
Right.
Did you get clarification?
We did not at that time, figured we would monitor to see if it would even be a site that we would consider developing. And at that point in time, if we wanted to move to the next phase, then we would go ask the question...
But if you didn't get clarification, why even check the zoning? If it doesn't matter, why did you even bother checking the zoning?
Well, we felt that there was an interpretation that water extraction could be considered manufacturing light, because there's no definition...
But you are professionals. Why didn't you get clarification?
Donna, 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 please, please let me try to answer your question.
Okay.
We, our interpretation was that water extraction could be considered manufacturing light. It was somewhat of a subjective decision.
Shady.
No, not shady.
Okay.
So we continued to monitor springs, figuring if we wanted to move to the next phase, we would then make an argument that it should be considered manufacturing light and therefore allowed in the commercial zoning district. If we were told that the township did not agree with that interpretation, then we would not proceed.
But we did, I mean, with the pending lawsuit, why are you still here? Why are you disrespecting us?
Because the current zoning ordinance defines water extraction as manufacturing light, which is allowed...
But that all goes back to the pending lawsuit.
I understand.
So you don't feel that any change was required? If there wasn't a change for the 2014 ordinance, you would have still been okay?
We feel that no change was necessarily required to the zoning ordinance. However, there was a new draft zoning ordinance proposed whenever it was proposed and eventually enacted in 2014. We noticed in early 2014, we saw a newspaper advertisement about the new zoning ordinance. We reviewed it.
You're the only one who did, because none of us saw it. None of us saw it, not one person in this room.
We reviewed, we then went and reviewed, we then went and reviewed the draft zoning ordinance, which showed that the language associated with water extraction was being changed industry. We recognized that if it was changed industry, then it would clearly not be allowed in the commercial zoning district. I had a conversation with the property owner, because we had no agreements with the property owner at that time, other than basic access.
Twenty days later, you did, twenty days after the ordinance, you had an agreement.
And Mr. Gower, Mr. Gower sought out his attorney to pursue a change in the zoning ordinance, which he did.
So Mr. Anderson, I'll pick up, since she sat down with that line of questioning. That is, are you saying that you did not have, you were not aware that you were not permitted?
No, I'm not saying that.
When you saw that advertisement with the industry, with the new language?
With the new language, you're not gonna...
At that point in time, my question is, you still did, were not aware that you were really not permitted at that time?
And they had no permit?
Yes, you did.
Well, the draft zoning ordinance wasn't obviously in effect. I'm not sure I understand the question.
I'm asking, when you first realized that you were not, that you were really not permitted? Was it only after the discussion surrounding that amendment?
Again, I'm not sure I completely understand the question, Doug.
It's pretty simple. You were assuming that you might be permitted.
Right, correct.
But at some point, did you become aware that you were really not permitted?
No, because we didn't have, because we did not have a conversation with the township to see how they might rule on that.
So then the, I believe, is the answer that you first found out that you were not permitted under the existing ordinance after the fallout in 2015, when it was discovered this change of admitting you were actually permitted. At some point, you found out that you were really not permitted under the 2004 ordinance that was in effect?
I do not agree with that.
Sir, there's a piece that, there's a piece you are missing.
What is that?
Under the municipality's, under the municipality's planning code, there's a provision that says that zoning ordinances have to be interpreted in the manner most favorable to the landowner. In this case, your 2004 ordinance read with manufacturing, no definition of manufacturing light. What Mr. Anderson said about it being a subset is exactly how it reads.
Okay, let me tell you what you're missing, sir, respectfully. You know what it would take for you then to figure out that they were not permitted use? It'd take me two, it'd take me less than two minutes to explain it. They would have gone to the ordinance, which was online at that time, you can still find it if you know how to. The 2004 ordinance is still on the server of Eldred Township, it's not linked to, but it's there. You would have looked up and found water extraction is defined slash bottling, it's defined as manufacturing, as Mr. Anderson said. Then what you would have done is you would have gone to the use table, schedule of use tables for the commercial district and the industrial district. And as Mr. Anderson said, in the commercial district, which was what they were looking at, you saw manufacturing light. And as he also said, it's not defined anywhere. Now, if you go to the industrial use table, you would have found, under special exceptions, manufacturing and industry. And that's how even a moron could have figured out that manufacturing, which water extraction was defined as, was permitted in the industrial district? And if you went back, because you thought you might have missed something, and you went back here, and you say, "Oh, in the commercial district," and you scoured this? Nowhere here would you find manufacturing.
No, manufacturing light is allowed, which is a subset of manufacturing, sir.
Then why did they not...
That's bullshit.
Then why did you have to scratch it out and put manufacturing light at the last...
And then what you would have done, and you damn well know it, is you would have gone and got, gone to your zoning officer and asked him for an interpretation.
Exactly. Exactly.
Tell me that. And you wait for corruption to take over.
That is right.
Sometimes the truth is gonna really come out about what happened in this township, and it's gonna be on a lifetime movie.
I am ready, I'm already sweetened, and I'm ready to hear about all the benefits that Nestle is going to bring to our communities. Things keep talking about the benefits as communities, I have, I want to hear it all. Because I...
Our house values, we will not be able to sell our houses, it's gonna have to be disclosed that Nestle is here, everybody better know that. We are, we will not be able to sell our houses, in twenty years from now, we'll be renting them out to a bunch of druggies, this whole neighborhood will be destroyed, and that's a fact. And those people come in here, we will sink, we will...now, what nine-year-old doesn't know, who's gonna buy your house when a half-mile away, a mile away, Nestle's is sucking their well water? Who will buy our houses? Tell me that, Nestle. Who is gonna buy our houses on my farm?
Literally, you will not be here. You're gonna have an empty building with a computer pumping wood all, only thing we get is a bunch of big ass trucks.
All right, all right, all right. And you guys are from Swinsley.
The purpose of, Eric is willing to address that, but the purpose of this meeting is to hopefully ask some constructive questions. You've made some good points, the planning commission has numerous times referenced the procedures, of which this took pace, and our displeasure with those procedures, and we've taken appropriate action. So, question was asked about benefits, Mary Ann?
They didn't answer the question about benefits, no?
The only person who has been cut off for time, before we call on someone else, could we go back to her and let her ask her question?
We can.
Thank you.
Did you pay her, Trace?
Yeah. Okay, sure. All right. We will hear what the benefits of these procedures are.
The benefits against the negatives, so this, this board, to hear what are the benefits of the project, of the community.
I appreciate that question. With a project like this, we do not provide any jobs in the local community. With a project like this, um, we, we do not provide any jobs in the local community. We recognize that is undeserved. We, we would like to be able to provide jobs, but this type of project does not bring jobs to the community. We are growing at our facility in Bryansville, but it would not provide jobs in Elder Township. I understand that. So, since we cannot provide that benefit of employment, we look for other ways that we can provide benefit to the community. And that's why we've, you know, I had a lot of conversations with many people in the community about what could Nestle Waters do if we came to the community to help benefit the community? And I didn't hear any consistent answers, so we decided maybe a community benefit fund would be an appropriate action to take. So we proposed to establish a community benefit fund and deposit up to $750,000 in that community benefit fund that then could be allocated by members of the community for projects that they felt would be beneficial in, in the community. In addition, in addition to that, that would be upfront, when we were, you know, permitted and constructed and ready to go, we would also make annual contributions to various organizations in the community as well.
That's a real slap in the face. Seven hundred fifty thousand is a slap in the face.
And ruin the county, you ruin the township, and you will ruin the school district.
Oil property.
Are you happy? I would like, I can just, I can continue my answer. We've operated twenty, uh, several spring sites in eastern Pennsylvania for 20 years. We've, early on in that process, we had similar, um, concerns expressed by the various communities we were operating. And over time, we've lived up to the commitments that we established with those communities. We've built trust with those communities. And we are a good neighbor in those communities, and I would intend to do the same thing here in Elder Township.
Well, then staying those communities away from here.
Yeah, go build there. Please go build there.
I had asked a question previously to your water quality analyst in terms of your projected or estimated data, which was construed in some way to show the recharge rate that would keep the aqua chicula at minimum standard, I guess is the best way to flow. And I had asked what you could show that would provide substance to that assertion, because it's completely invalid if in fact the buckwa had run completely dry, as it did in 1972. And I wasn't given an answer, so I think we need one in this forum.
Sure, thank you for the question. We, in, in looking at our analysis, we looked at gauge data at the Aqua Chicula Creek back to 1940, and that data is used to look at the sustainability of the streams, um, and to look at that. There's also, we now have gauging on our site to, to gauge that during a drought. Um, I'm not aware of the stream going dry in 1974, but I did not live there, but I can certainly look at the gauge data and see.
I was specifically referring to the buckwa, you had referenced the Aqua Chicula, which...
Yeah, it's a sub, the buckwa's a subset of the, it's a, it's a, it's a sub-basin of the Aqua Chicula Creek. And, um, it's about, I think, I think I said it's about a quarter of the size. Uh, but the gauge data from the Aqua Chicula, we, we look at over the period of record, and we will look at it, at this site too, from the monitoring that's established. If there is a condition where the buckwa creek runs dry, I mean, that would be a severe drought. And there would, well, if it does again, there was, again, the permitting is based upon the sustainability of the site. If that were to happen again, permit conditions would kick in that would restrict, severely restrict the flow or the inability to pull water from the site. We have, again, we have passed by requirements to the stream, you'll have to maintain a certain amount of flow to the stream. And that's based upon the flow in the stream. If the stream's not flowing, they're gonna want the site to maintain that flow to the stream.
Obviously, and I, I, thank you very much.
And if the streams were dry, they could not meet their pass by requirement, and they could not pump the water if the streams were dry.
Correct, but, but my, my question, or I guess maybe just my opinion, is that, that really kind of makes your analysis not substantial then, right?
No, I disagree. So the permitting levels go, again, to your point, if there's an extreme drought and the streams go dry, then we couldn't even do our pass by from the unnamed tributary, because that would be, if the buckwa creek's dry, the unnamed tributary is probably gonna be dry. And therefore, if that's dry, the withdrawals would, would not be allowed based upon not meeting our pass by.
Correct, and I understand that's an exceptional situation, just like a thunderstorm or flood or drought or anything like that. But again, you know, it's a concern, it's a concern for all of us, because everyone's been told that can't happen, this can't happen, our analysis says this, our data concludes that, but yet anything can happen.
And in that case, it happens, there's conditions in the permit that would restrict the pumping severely if the streams went dry. Again, we did it in a dry time, we then projected it out to a 21, 25-year drought.
It wasn't a dry time.
This fall, we did it in the fall.
Twenty percent is not considered a dry time, like they differ with you.
We, we've been in the area, this, this was a very dry fall. For a lot of the falls, and it was, it was a dry fall.
And really, USGS, ENS Conservation District would beg to differ with you as well.
We, we monitor many sites, it was a very dry fall. Um, the, so we did the testing, we didn't do it in a wet time, we did it in a dry time. The drier, the drier the time, and typically the regulatory agencies want us to do it in the fall, before the leaves come off the tree, um, when, when it is, when...
But the leaves were off in November, so.
Um, it was a very extended fall, and at that time, the water levels weren't rising. Usually when the leaves come off the trees, the water levels rise. And the water levels were, were lower in the fall because of the lack of rainfall. So, doing testing in a dry time, then we then project the withdrawal to a 25, 180-day withdrawal of no rain, which is an extreme condition. And then we take that, and we look at it at a 25-year drought, to see if it's sustainable in 25-year drought. And then on top of that, there'll be a pass by requirement that is on, on the permit, and on top of that, there'll be a drought mitigation plan in case this extreme condition like that would happen. Again...
And your side of all of this mitigation implementation is done by whom?
It would be in permit conditions and the DEP permit, and also Department of Environmental Protection, also the Delaware River Basin Commission will be permit conditions.
And no other outside authority has any type of implementation activity other than those two?
Those are the primary agencies. I mean, they'll be monitoring data that, that the applicant will be, that Nestle will be collecting, that'll be available for other people to look at. And they could certainly look at that data and bring that to the attentions of the agencies, and I'm sure the agencies would not fall on deaf ears.
Okay, well, I'm glad, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Don't go away just yet. I have a question for the hydrogeologist. Hi. Actually, two. First question is, um, with regards to the sustainability numbers for this one in 25-year drought that you guys base some of these extraction numbers on. Are, is that the most conservative number that's available, or is there a one in 50-year, one in 100-year type numbers that are even more conservative than that? My concern would be that, given that the potential length of term for the lease period could be up to 45 years, that a longer period of time where even a potentially more extreme drought condition would need to be looked at. Uh, that's the first question.
Can I answer that first?
Yep, go ahead.
So thank you for that. So, the one in 25-year drought is, is a regulatory, uh, through, through the Delaware River Basin Commission that we look at that, is what would be sustainable in a 1-25-year drought. For more severe droughts, I think I just explained some of the other, other safeguards that would be in the permit, with the pass by requirements, and also site monitoring data to look at that. So if there's a more extreme drought, certainly it would impact site operations in that, from those regards.
Okay, but, um, when you're doing your initial, I guess, submission information here, though, and it's basing it on a recharge number, which is, say, what, allowable, like 200,000 gallons average, um, is it coming off of that, say, drought number on that one in 25-year? Because if it was something more extreme over a longer period of time, then that would reduce that number, correct?
If it was, again, it's, it's on a 1-25-year drought, and the cycle's sustainable. So we're, in a 1-25-year drought, it was indicated to be 525,000 gallons would be the drought amount taken. So what we're looking at is below that, is 200,000 gallons, so it's even much less than a 1-25-year drought.
Understood, but is there something at, say, a next year, which is like 50-year or 40-year?
Well, it's the recurrence interval, basically. If you look at the, if you look at the gauges, or just like a 25-year, 100-year storm, you know, there'll be, you know, if you have a 100-year gauge and you rank that data, you know, there'd be recurrence interval 25, 50, 75, 100, yes. But that, that also would be, uh, another extreme event that would, would also curtail site operations based upon monitoring, based upon pass bys, based upon that. And it's also sustainable, so if that happens in one year, and it's, and it's, and it's, and it's reduced because of the permit conditions, the next year when you get the rain back, you know, the water's gonna be there again. So it's based upon a returning sustainable use.
Okay, last question, real quick. Um, with regards to the actual extraction process, when you're withdrawing, say, the 135 gallons per, um, you discussed that within that sandstone sediment area that's porous, that's holding the aquifer, um, there'd be a decrease in pressure. With that decrease in pressure, is there gonna be a lot of land movement associated with that in some manner, where homeowners may have to worry about other things outside of the water aspects, where there could be foundation cracking, things of that nature? Yes?
Absolutely not. This is the hard rock aquifer, where you've heard of Lanceside, and it's maybe in California, where there were little aquifers that they're buoyed by, buoyed by the water, and they've done extraction, but not only extraction, they've done mining, they've done groundwater mining. So the water levels would be here, and they're now 100 feet lower, so those pore spaces that were filled with water have compacted. In this case, we're not allowed to do groundwater mining, one. Two, the aquifer is different, it's a sandstone aquifer that, that will not have compaction when you, you have that. If, in the extreme case that you would have, that we showed on their map, that the most drawdown is right on the site is about 30 feet. So if there was any, and I don't see, I haven't not seen that in a sandstone aquifer, but if there was to be any settlement, it would be right where the well is.
Thank you. Trey?
I would like to take my supervisor hat off and just put my resident hat on and my business owner hat on, and share my concerns. And they are that we came here 47 years ago, and 14 years after we came, we started a business. And that business has grown over the years and is now a family business. But we've always had a plan that, on the average of every six years, we would expand a little more and a little more. And this business has allowed us to provide, uh, jobs for 55 people and a service to the elderly community. And one of our biggest concerns now is how it's going to affect us, because we're a public water supplier, and of course, we have wells, um, how it's going to affect our septic systems if there is any kind of issues with severe droughts. The impact on the roads is a very big concern of ours, because we have elderly drivers, we have people pulling into a driveway right off of the Cunkletown Road, if that happens to be one of the pathways that the trucks go. There are no shoulders on the roads, and when there's snow, there's definitely no shoulders on the roads, because the snow is right there. We also have a, have a land development plan in the township, because we're always looking ahead to how we can better, uh, serve the community, serve the people that we have jobs for. And so that usually means there's gonna be some kind of growth or advancement in the business. And now it's become a family business, so the family is in there doing the same thing. And I would not probably consider coming into this community if I had to deal with all these trucks on the road, regardless of how often it would happen. And I may not have proof that, uh, somebody's gonna tell me that there's a, a change in the real estate value. It's just common sense that I would not choose to come to a community that has these kinds of issues going on. And so I, I have fear for all the hard work that my husband and I and our family have done over the years. And when we came here, we tried to provide something for the community that they could take advantage of. And so I just wanted to take this time to make my statement.
Oh, now we're gonna use the mic.
Here, here, we walked away. You heard, here we talk, and we walked away.
Artis Sweeney? Uh, my question, I don't even know who to direct for that. But in the conversation tonight, I understand that this isn't only Nestle's one site, you have other sites?
Yeah.
How many of them are rural?
I'd like to talk, somebody talk to me.
Yes, ma'am, most of the sites are, are very rural.
How many of them?
Uh, in eastern Pennsylvania, six.
Six? Uh, how long have you been drawing water from these other six communities?
Uh, 20 years.
20 years. Uh, do you have any data on we've been far?
Absolutely. We have readings of data.
On the effects of Nestle's drawing water on these communities? How are these communities faring? How are their school systems doing?
The, the operations that we have been operating, our operations in the other communities have, have been operated sustainably. They have not affected the water availability or anybody's access to water in those communities at all.
Oh, what about the traffic? I'm sure you have, people, do all of these go down to the Nestle's bottling?
They do.
They do. So how has the traffic affected these, I'm assuming they're rural areas, very similar to what we have here?
Some are more rural than others, yes.
How are they coping with Nestle's traffic?
Uh, I've gotten no feedback negative on it, so...
Have you gotten any feedback?
Actually, I have, and it's been positive, but we haven't had any, any problems at all.
People in the community, have you followed these communities and their complaints? Have you inquired about any of these other communities where you are?
Yes, in, in some of the other communities where folks had similar concerns as yours, water, trucks. We did receive complaints about trucks on occasion, early in our operations. And we maybe made some adjustments to our operations to try to, you know, resolve any issues, and, and we do not hear complaints in those communities where they operate.
There's been no adverse effects from Nestle on it? So we can expect to say that there would be no adverse, it's like you're not even here?
I wouldn't say not, like we're, we're not even here, but we...
You're not even there.
We, we intend to be a positive presence in, in, in the communities where we, where we have operations. And I think we've, we've done that in the communities that we've been withdrawing water from for, for 20 years.
Is that through a donation, or is that through, like you proposed here, 750,000 dollars?
Sure, sure.
Well, that would mean buy one farm here.
Understood.
Hundred seventy-five thousand dollars over 25 years? Is that what Nestle's is going to put into the community?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear the question.
I had heard that you had a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar fund set up for the...
No. The, the 750,000 dollar community benefit fund that we would establish if we were permitted and we move into operations, uh, that's money that could be allocated however the community felt appropriate.
Nestle every year, or is that a one-time?
In addition to that, though, that's, that's one time. But in addition to that, we would also make monetary contributions to the community, you know, different organizations, whether it be the township, or the fire company, or, or other organizations in the community. That would be ongoing, every year.
And have you thought at all, if there is an adverse effect, to put a central water system in here? Like you're putting two towers over there? Why couldn't you put a tower in somewhere here or on that property, designate it to the people in this community?
Our intent is to develop a water supply that would not have an adverse impact on other people in the community. So therefore, a community water system would not be needed.
So you don't need to even consider that?
I, I don't believe so, because we intend to operate a facility that would not have adverse impacts on other people's water supplies.
I have two...
I'll follow what Artis was saying, though. I live right on the drill site. I live right on the drill site. My property butts up against. I've marked on my calendar. I've lived in my house 24 years. It was my great-grandparents' house before that. So I've been in that house 55 years of my life. For the first time, we have sulfur now. Eric, did I not tell you about the sulfur?
You did.
What was done about sulfur?
I don't believe anything was done, but I'm going to turn that question over to Lou.
Okay, turn it over to whoever.
You indicated there's sulfur in your well that's drilled and you're in a low area next to the stream?
I'm right on, I'm outside of town.
In our experience, in wells located the stream, occasionally sulfur can happen. On the site that we were drilling, we were across the stream in the shale and those wells had no effect on, from the pumping that we did on the test. Now, if you have a problem with your well, I'm sure that, pardon me? It's part of the residential protection commitment, residential well protection commitment.
Eric, how many times have I asked to see that agreement?
Several, we've spoken about the agreement.
We've spoken, but I've never seen it.
Well, Donna, let me clarify. There's no agreement at this point in time. We've made a residential well protection commitment, which is basically we'd like to turn that into an agreement between Nestle Waters North America and Eldred Township. It's not an agreement yet. It's something we would commit to doing if the project were to move forward.
You don't have an example from Penargil or Nutropole?
No, every community's wealth protection agreement is different. They're structured a little bit differently. Yes.
I still, I've never had sulfur for 55 years. I have my dates marked. When we started smelling it, I've gone to you, I went to Phil Getty. Is this an example of what we're up against? Well, you just said, no.
My professional opinion, and I'll certainly lean on Lou too, no, it's not a result of anything that we did at the site.
Thank you.
Keep in mind when the DEP was here and the DRVC was here, they certainly suggested that we, as individuals, do some routine monitoring of wells, at least to establish a baseline. And so you would have something to compare to.
I have a baseline to start with. My game is just done.
All right, we'll have two more questions.
I would just like to make a comment, refresh Mr. Anders's memory. At the last planning board meeting, and I hope our tape picked it up, I asked him, why would you have been there for two, three years and then 28 days before you signed the agreement, you bring up the issue of being able to extract the water in that zone? I said, water extraction was never allowed in that industrial zone. So why would you have waited a couple of years and then wait until you want to sign the agreement and then ram it through? He said, we didn't think about it. Was that your answer that you gave?
That's not my recollection.
That's not my recollection, Bernie. That is not my recollection.
You have a short memory.
I apologize, I don't remember my exact words from a month ago.
That was your answer to that?
He don't remember. He didn't write it down.
And if it's on tape, we'll look at it together. Hopefully it is. That's why we can't trust you. Purely simple.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Preston and I represent several residents in the township. And in particular, Quinn, Donna Deal, Paulie Dunkelberger, Paul Lisa LaMonaco, probably another eight or so other residents. The questions that I have for the panel here, I'll raise those, I'll save those for the zoning hearing. I have a comment for the board. One of the things that I have done, my clients, is he's taken an appeal or a challenge, if you will, to the ordinance that enables these gentlemen to be here this evening. And just for the record, I'd like to note it for the record that that's filed, that's Moncombe County docket number 9478 CV 2015. I think it's also important to note that the application for special exception that was filed by Nestle was filed after that appeal. So that application was filed knowing that the ordinance under which that application was filed had been challenged and is being challenged. I do believe that they're proceeding at their own risk. And just one other comment, I think, just listen to the comments here this evening. I think one of the reasons why this, you're getting a lot of the blowback that you're getting and why this project is probably not suited for this particular site is that because of the chain of events that led to the amendment of the ordinance to allow this to be here, that unfortunate chain of events has caused this project to be located at a property that it was never intended for. I think that's why you're seeing a lot of this in terms of the infrastructure, the roads, different things, the problems that you have with it. It's because this township never intended for this use to be located at that property. They're making a claim that it's located there now under the amended ordinance. I'm not going to litigate that case here this evening, but I think there's some problems with the amended ordinance. But I do want that on the record. And I do want to know that I do believe that they are proceeding at their own risk.
I'd like to just make one last comment, apologize to the crowd. I wanted to apologize for using foul language before lawyers can do that. I believe I did make the point. He was trying to say that manufacturing late is undefined and the MPC gives latitude, and that's true. However, manufacturing is defined in the ordinance and water extraction was considered manufacturing. But we won't litigate that further. Following on the solicitor's comments, I wanted to point out that one of your objectives here is to see that the comprehensive plan is not violated. And I mentioned six ways that this is violated due to the manner in which this amendment was passed that should, in my opinion, should not have passed.
You know, it would also actually be helpful if you have that in writing, you can give that to the plan, I mean, you can say it too, but you know...
I will hand this in.
Then you make a copy of it.
Yeah. This is not in harmony with the following goals of the comprehensive plan. On page 1-4, common land use designations and definitions. When Seadr was created, now Seadr, their main objective was to create common definitions and common definitions of uses across the entire region. And if you look today, everybody else has this defined as industry and because of this change, ours is defined as manufacturing tunnel aid. Preserve open space corridors on page 4-2. Along creeks, preserve water quality and natural features. On page 4-7, identify the appropriate character of future commercial and industrial development. Minimize the conflict between non-residential and residential uses. Foster compatibility between present and future land uses. In land use, manufacturing late or late manufacturing, any land use planner and solicitor that's familiar with land use knows that that is a lower intensity than industrial uses and manufacturing. If you look at our ordinance, it's clear that manufacturing is considered the same level of intensity as industrial uses. You do not locate those next to residential development if you can help it. My understanding is Mr. Anders made a comment at some point along the way to residents, I wish all those houses weren't there. And my assumption is in general, they don't locate next to houses. Page 4-7, allocate land uses over the entire region in an appropriate manner rather than on a municipal basis. That's exactly what happened here. They changed one town and they left all the others a different way. On page 4-7, identify significant natural resource lands and stream corridors for professional open space conservation. And then lastly, on page 620, locate extraction industries in an industrial zone. That's exactly where it was located until the change was made. And that's all covered in section 1208.4A of the ordinance that you're supposed to check out to see if this is compatible with the comprehensive plan. I had sent a couple planners some recommendations and one of them included staying if you would have a permit. And I'm withdrawing that request and I didn't see it on your list. My understanding is, and I confronted this myself in the past, that applicants will proceed at their own risk. And that's all I have to say. I did want to ask Mr. Anders, and before I got upset and swore, is it common for Nestle to set up shop for a few years in an area where they're not certain that they have a permitted use? And go and contract people like EarthRes and sit for two years, you know, for two years, study a site? I mean, is that common? And then find out possibly that they weren't really permitted use?
I would necessarily say it's common, but it's not necessarily uncommon either. We felt that there was an interpretation that would allow that use in the commercial zoning district.
Normally, you would contact the zoning.
Just finish my answer. The water quality and quantity monitoring that we were conducting over that period of time was very low-cost monitoring. So we were not putting much money at risk. So that's why we continue to do so.
I have a quick policy question for you gentlemen, Mr. Eric. You keep talking about community and how, you know, you love the communities around you. I moved away from the city to be in, you know, in the rural area. I wanted to move away from all this stuff. But I started doing research on Nestle. I can't find anything positive about the Nestle organization. In fact, I found just numerous upon numerous upon numerous amounts of articles about the same thing you're doing in this town, the exact same thing, coming in late night, late night deals, padding pockets, et cetera, et cetera. I'm going to try to keep this positive, but I just have two quick anecdotes. And this is just, these are articles online and things that are backed up by fact. But this is more of a policy question, quickly. The CEO of Nestle states that water is not a human right. What do you say to the farmers and people in this community that rely on that water for their livelihood?
Water is absolutely a human right.
No, I didn't ask that question. I said, what do you feel about your CEO of Nestle stating this question?
What I feel about is his comment was taken out of question. I believe that comment was made about 10 years ago.
That doesn't matter. It's a quote. Should I read the quote? I can read the quote.
I understand your point.
Okay.
My point is, is I believe his comments were taken out of context. Since that comment was made and, you know, we feel incorrectly interpreted, the CEO has made it very clear that the company believes that water is a basic human right. Our company is committed to doing things in the communities where we have operations to try to provide water resources, especially in those third world countries that don't have them. So the company has clarified the position.
Okay, so it's changed since then. And my other thing is, what really brings me here is I am very deeply, deeply disturbed about the allegations, not allegations, it's been said by Nestle that this is true. You're battling two court cases right now on two different continents about child slavery. I've read the reports, you've known about this as early as 2005. These kids are as young as six years old, they're beaten. And it's appalling to me that an organization, that you guys are backing this organization. And I understand it doesn't have to do with water, but you're talking about neighbors and communities. And anybody that uses child slavers and beats children, I can't be a human being and sleep at night and let my children and my grandchildren know that I let this type of organization into my community.
I agree. And Nestle has worked very hard over the years to ensure that throughout the supply chain, there was no child slavery going on.
But they've known about it since 2005 and nothing's been changed. So it's about a decade.
I can't speak to, I honestly can't speak to that.
I understand that.
But what I do know is many large companies that have supply chains that extend far out, well beyond the Nestle name into other companies, that is a problem. They're trying to rid that of the supply chain.
The comment, just so everybody knows, the comment by Nestle is that because everybody else is using child slaves, it's okay for them to use child slaves.
I don't believe that's true.
I don't believe that that should be fair either. And I have one last one, I apologize. I just saw this today, but it sounds very relevant to what's happening here. The quote is, "Michigan water wars. Nestle pumps millions of gallons for free while Flint pays for poisoned water." And I'll quote it real quick. "One of the most surprising things about this story is that in Mancosta County, Nestle is not required to pay anything to extract the water besides a small permitting fee to the state and the cost of leases to a private landowner. In fact, the company received $13 million in tax breaks from the state to locate the plant in Michigan. The spokesperson for Nestle in Michigan is Deborah Muchmore. She's the wife of Dennis Muchmore, Governor Rick Snyder's chief of staff." And I just wondered if you could...
My responsibility is to Midland region. I cannot speak on behalf of anything in Michigan.
Okay, these are our neighbors, guys. These are who we want our neighbors to be. Thank you.
Now, just a couple of questions. These are very short questions. It is technical in nature. Is your sustainability opinion at all based on the fact that remediation is required and you venture the problem with neighboring wells?
Sustainability is based upon the water resource analysis that we did. And I think you said, is it based upon remediation of neighboring wells?
Yes, is it based at all upon the fact that there has to be remediation in neighboring wells if there's a problem?
I think that's a commitment in Nestle that if there is a problem, and in this instance, we do not believe there will be, that there is a commitment to mitigate that.
That's not a part of your sustainability analysis, is that correct?
No, in our presentation, we pointed out to the west to wells that have had a pressure decrease during the monitoring of the test. We pointed it out head-on.
No, I understand that. I just want to be clear that you're not being influenced by the fact that there's an obligation to remediate neighboring wells.
No, the analysis shows, and we could get into this at another time, that the water that supplies those wells is coming from the hill above those wells to the west. It's not the same water that Nestle is looking at extraction on the site to the east.
Okay. My next question is, there was a negative impact to the wells, we said, on the western side. Could that negative impact be mitigated by simply limiting the amount of the water withdrawal? In other words, if you went down to 150,000 or 100,000, would that negative impact of those wells not occur?
Again, we didn't, there was a pressure response in their wells. We did not take the water from their wells. And so the sustainability was based upon the available water that was coming from the east to those wells.
Okay, but would that impact not have occurred if you lessened the amount of the withdrawal?
In a confined aquifer, the pressure increased very rapidly, whether we did one test or two. That's the way the pressure works in a confined aquifer. So the sustainability does not take that into account in that the water that we are getting is coming from the east.
I know, just a simple question. If you had done the test scenario on a lesser withdrawal amount, would it have had a different impact on those wells?
Again, the impact, in your words, is we have a pressure response in those wells. We do not believe that there is an impact to the water availability in those wells.
Now, you would agree in terms of planning concepts that the amount of water, the amount of water you're taking out of the basin on a percentage basis is higher than the amount of the land acreage on the Gower track compared to the overall acreage in the basin? Is that correct?
That is your premise of it. The water permitting is not done on a, we talked about it earlier, it's not done on a property basis based upon the aquifer and it's based upon the recharge areas. I mean, when you draw water from your well at home, the water that's feeding your well is coming from rainfall that's coming off of your property. If you put a water supply in at the Conkle Town store, that water supply in the stream would be coming from stream water coming off your property.
Well, just tell me, by understanding your report correctly, that the Gower track is equal to 21% of the acreage of the basin? Is that correct? And that the water, the water...
I don't know that number. There was, we personally got the Hannover Township Engineering. I think that's where that analysis, not analysis we did. So I can't verify the percentage of numbers that you're telling me.
Okay, and the last thing is that if the, if the Nestle's plan is treated as a water supply source, the wellhead protection zones kick in and that can limit the type of land use within those wellhead protection zones? Is that correct?
Certainly, within the wellhead protection zone, we define where our... Certainly, within the wellhead protection zone, we define where our water is coming from, and if there's other uses outside, in the township's wellhead protection zone, Nestle would not oppose those uses.
Yeah, but I was just talking about, in terms of future development, couldn't that be limited on the current township ordinance by the fact that now those uses will be in a wellhead protection zone?
I would have to defer to the zoning analysis of that.
The answer, Mr. Gaul, is yes. For example, in the wellhead protection area, Zone 2, you're not allowed to have confined animal feeding lots, like 1,000 pigs. You are allowed to have them generally in a livestock area. It's a permitted use. If somebody tried to put a 1,000-pig farm within the zone of a well, they would not be allowed. There are certain other uses where they would need to get a special exception use. And your ordinance is very clear on those. Most of the uses, and we went down and compared all of the uses in the zones, and there are some uses, and I think I can tick them off the top of my head. One is sewage sludge. Application is not allowed within the half-mile area. Large bulk underground storage tanks are not allowed. The, I mentioned the concentrated animal feeding lots. Now I have to take out my glasses. Oops, wrong glasses. No sun today.
Oh, the large volume sewage disposal systems, that was the other one that I didn't do from my memory. He has better eyes than I do.
I have one question for Eric, maybe he can clarify this.
I understand that the previous landowner who Regard bought the land from, is it true that he still has mineral rights on that property?
I'm going to ask him to address that question.
Recently asked, I wonder if the previous owner has the mineral rights, do they know what is happening on that land?
I'm under the same mineral rights and I don't have them anymore.
Yeah, I would have to go back to the title search records, but my understanding is, the one set of mineral rights that was at one time outstanding with respect to, there was a quarry on that site. I believe that as a result of their giving up their mine, they may still have something, but they have nothing they can mine, and they basically, with respect to what they could extract from that site, have already done it.
I think it's the life expectancy of mineral rights.
I just wondered, I'd heard the previous owner still had the mineral rights and how this would work out if they would want to come back.
But they didn't keep the surface rights in their, I believe at this point, they could not come on unless they tried to do surface mining, they couldn't do surface mining. And by the way, I don't believe service mining would be allowed under your ordinance in that district at this point.
Okay. Helen tells me... Oh, I'm sorry. One more.
I'd like to ask two or three quick questions.
Two?
To make it thorough.
To me?
No, to the all.
Okay.
Three quick questions.
Lou.
I know the boreholes that you plan on accessing are already drilled and are identified. I'd like to know what the elevation is that each of those boreholes exists at.
Certainly, I have a plan here, I have a cross-section with those exact elevations that you'd like to go, I mean, there's a lot of numbers for the wells, I'd be happy to go over it with you.
Well, I'm only concerned about the elevation that borehole 1 and borehole 2 exist at.
So I could pull out the application and look at the specific numbers for you, because it's a specific question.
Why don't I check with you?
Want to check afterwards?
Yeah, that's fine.
Certainly.
The second question is, since we all now know that this aquifer travels from east to west, is there any reason in the world why the cone of depression was kept at such a small level, traveling in an easterly direction? I would have thought since this aquifer is a very, a very large aquifer, carrying pristine water, and coming from the east, I would have thought someone would be required to establish a much larger cone of depression than 1,000 feet, which is my understanding what currently was used. Are you in agreement with that number?
We could look at the map and also measure it off of, the cone of depression was actually determined from the testing that was done at the site. So those are actual measurements of water levels when the boreholes are being pumped.
I mean, doesn't that seem like an extremely small cone of depression for testing purposes in such a large aquifer, especially when you're only traveling roughly 1,000 feet in the direction that you know the water is coming from?
Yes, I mean, it's a prolific aquifer, water's coming down the hill, but those are actual measured cone, that's an actual measured cone of depression based upon the data collected during the test. And it's also limited to the north and the south by the geology. So the geology, to the north and south, we have clay and we have some other units that aren't sandstone, so the drawdown's not propagated in that direction. And the water table coming down the hill is such that it's fairly steep, and so when you draw the water, it's pulling from the water that's coming down the hill too, so yes.
But you still didn't answer my question.
Which is?
Isn't 1,000 feet a very small cone of depression for testing purposes in such a large watershed with such a strong aquifer?
It is, it is what we measured, sir. It's what, when the testing was done, that was actually what was measured in the cone of depression.
Let me put the question this way. Should the cone of depression that you measured not been, should it not have been made larger?
The cone of depression is actually measured from actual measurement, I cannot make it larger, I cannot make it smaller. It is what the data tells me that the water levels are.
Did you put any gauges on the Princess Run Creek and measure the effect on the Princess Run when you were doing all your testing and your drawdown? The Princess Run is a fairly substantial contributor to the Buckwheat.
And it's located up gradient of the Buckwheat. So we had a gauge on the Buckwheat, so any contribution coming down from the Princess Run would have been measured in the gauge that we had on the Buckwheat Creek.
But that wouldn't show what your impact might be on the water that would have come down, the Princess Run versus what might have come down because of your testing.
So there's a principle of kind of superposition in when you're doing the testing. You have a source of extraction and you have wells next to it, and we have wells surrounding it that show the drawdown was less and less as we went to the north. So if...
Went to the north or went to the east?
To the north, to the north. Princess Run is located to the north and to the east, so it's also in the shale, it's over a different geologic unit. So if we have close into the site, no impact, at a distance farther from the site, we would have zero impact. Because the impacts are going to be the greatest closest to the drawdown. So we have monitoring wells that go to the north into the shale that had no drawdown. So if you're going across the creek, further up to the east and on the Princess Creek, there is, there would be no impact. And in that area, I'd have to look at the map, we could look there, there's some wells that we have in there, so we also, you know, we didn't monitor the stream per se because we were monitoring it at the Buckwheat, but we also monitored a couple wells in that direction.
Private properties?
Yes, yes, we have some private property wells.
My last question is this. Since you tested to see what the maximum amount of water is that could be taken without causing a problem supposedly to residential wells, and that test showed 525,000 gallons per day, is it Nestle's intention over a period of the next 25, or 35, or 45 years to move in the direction from 200,000 gallons per day to potentially 525,000 or 550,000 gallons a day? Because we know after tonight's meeting, or after this session is over, the zoning hearing board, Elgin Township won't have anything to say about this in the future. This will be strictly a DDP, DRBC exercise in determining how soon and how high, or how much higher the levels are that they're allowed to pump. Is it the intention, are we starting out at 200,000 with every intention, this stuff already getting possible gallons we can out of here in the future? Once we can get Elgin Township out of the picture, we just have to play with the DDP and the DRBC.
Terry, that's not our strategy. At this point in time, we have no intention of seeking a higher withdrawal limit. I will not say never. If down the road, the data indicate that more water might be available, we may consider it. It's absolutely not our intention at this point in time. I don't think we would, but again, I don't believe that would be the case.
You have a specific question for a specific...
I just want to know, is there like a bulleted list of points that are made in both the documentaries, Blue Gold and Bottled Life, that are refuted by Nestle? Mr. Weston? Is there a list of items in those documentaries that Nestle doesn't agree with?
I apologize, I didn't hear your question.
I'm just wondering, is there a list of items in the documentaries, Blue Gold and Bottled Life, that Nestle disagrees with? And can you provide that list to us so that we could be better informed?
Sure, I'd be glad to provide Nestle Waters' response to those various documentaries. I don't, I don't know...
I know there's a website, I know that, but I'm kind of tired of all this time that I've spent on this, and I would really like to just have a list, since there's so many of you working there, and you probably have that list.
We do, we absolutely have responses to the various documentaries, anti-Nestle, anti-bottled water, that I can provide you. If you'd like to provide me your email address, I'll be glad to send it to you or mail them, whatever you prefer. There's a lot of documentaries out there, and I have to say, they're not based on fact.
Helen tells me she's been in meetings that last well past 1:00, so we haven't broken any records tonight. You've been in meetings that lasted past 1:00 in the morning?
Well, Cinderella's carriage is going home very shortly.
That's right. Thank you, Nestle's and your colleagues. I think it was important for you to hear our residents. Some asked certainly cultural questions, some asked pinpointed questions, and I think you've enlightened us, and I think we can proceed how we choose to. As I've said numerous times before this, a lot of people had some great ideas, and they can be very specific, and they also could be very cultural. Make sure they get submitted, because I think from this point forth, there will not be a lot of opportunity unless you're a protestant, an official protestant, in front of the zoning hearing board to voice your opinion. I don't know, I'm anticipating the Planning Commission having another special session. We're going to put a document together based on what was discussed at our last special session, and we'll probably have another one, but probably not before the zoning hearing board. Again, it's our intention to get our recommendations at the zoning hearing board as soon as possible. All right, how do, old business? I don't think so. Public comment, the public comment is only directed to the Planning Commission, not to our participants.
Yep. I just want to get something through the record, or make it brief as possible.
This is to the Planning Commission.
I understand.
Okay.
Is there still suppressing the room or they're walking out?
Nah.
I had sent something to the Times News and to the Pocahontas Record, and I didn't send it to the Planning Commission, and I believe they may be going, I don't know where this gentleman's from. But I'll make this as brief as possible. There's something called the Wimmer Letter, which some people are familiar with. It's essentially the amendment that spurred this. If it hadn't been for this, we wouldn't be here. And I've worked it up, which I believe has several misrepresentations and false statements. And I also worked up a flow of how an amendment should pass through the system, and then a flow of how the amendment actually did pass through the system. I do want to make one point here. That is, that yes, it appears that our supervisors didn't actually authorize the amendment, they didn't authorize the advertisement of the amendment, you know, the final advertisement, there was an advertisement, it was done by Seager, and Seager's solicitor evidently, their names are on it, but here's the rub. Neither, Seager did not meet between those two Seager meetings, between the first one at which Mr. Helfrich, the planning consultant, had this amendment in his hand that he had drafted based on said faulty butter. He turned it into a two-word change, which he then sent back to the supervisors, which sent it on to your planning commission and sent it to the Monroe County Planning Commission, only sent the two-word change, didn't send this, which if people saw it, would pretty quickly realize if they had got two brain cells, there's problems here and it shouldn't have happened. Here's the thing. He's the consultant for Seager. Your tax dollars help pay for this guy. The planning consult was a shared expense to all the different Seager townships. He needs to be dragged in and explained, he did get this. The landowner's attorney sent this directly to him instead of sending it to the town. He's got questions to answer. He's the one that knows that you don't locate industry next to residential uses. There's no comment in the record, the two Seager meetings on March 27th and May 1st, there's transcripts of them. They were like your zoning hearing board's going to be. And Mr. Helfrich was at the first one, he described this as being a simple amendment, and he made it clear to Ms. Clausen, who actually asked a question. He said, between now and May 1st, we can only have simple amendments. A land use change is not a simple amendment, and he's the guy that should have said, by the way, he did say that night on March 27th, I've got this in my hand, will you authorize me to move it forward? And the supervisors did not authorize him to move it forward, yet he did, and he sent it to the Planning Commission, Monroe County Planning Commission, who also has questions to answer. They had this in their hands, and they also are professionals who should have known that it was nonsense. What did they get after that? He sent it to the director, Mr. Natori, he sent it to two planners, Mike Hart Fritz and Koopman. I spoke to Mr. Koopman, and I asked him, what did you get from Elgin Township to review? They had an official review, eight dollars, there were grant dollars used. Imagine this, you got Seager, Seager, we got a regional body, and we're going to get all these shared uses, and that's one of the things you can get grant dollars for. Well, they got them. But here, Mr. Koopman and Mr. Fritz, Mike Hart Fritz, who are the planners, they got this, but it evidently went into a file somewhere. A week or two later, they got the two-word amendment from Mr. Helfrich, the planning consultant drafted. And when I asked Mr. Koopman for what did you review and recommend back, and he told me it was this, only this, he didn't say, oh, we got this too and it's in a folder. He did have a serious look on his face, like, I wish you weren't asking me these questions. The Monroe County Planning Commission let us down, Mr. Ferreri, I'm sorry, Mr. Helfrich, by all means, the planning consultant, he's like, where's Waldo? You never see the guy. He evidently drafted these changes in his office. Nobody could, it wasn't in public. Supposed to be in public like this when you make land use changes, so the citizenry can give input. I know, I said I was going to be brief, I'm wrapping up. And then the Seager member townships, the Seager intergovernmental agreement dictates that they have input when there's an amendment. There's no record that this was sent to them. The amendment's in his hands, I'm finishing up on March 27th, they agreed, their next meeting would be on, their rescheduled meeting, they weren't going to adopt them, that these simple last-minute changes would be adopted on May 1st with all the other amendments. They knew they had these amendments in their hand. They knew they had these amendments in their hand. Do you think Seager scheduled a meeting in April between those two to review those amendments? They canceled their April meeting. They didn't do their job. So, there's serious questions to be answered. I'm going to go ahead and submit these, just to get them into the record, and I really think that there's questions that need to be answered, and I hope that we get some answers at some point in time. Thank you.
Helen?
No, I'm done. I went home at 12:00.
They wait for a motion today.
I'll make a motion to him, to do what? Make a motion to adjourn.
Wait here a second.